Morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome everybody to our January 22th Commissioners Court meeting. Let the record reflect we have a call where all commissioners are here. I'd like to call to make the order that as you please stand, you're going to be in the presence of the legislature.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Constitution of which stands our nation, our God, our individual, liberty and justice for all. Our effects of our better delegations to the insects, our own state, our own God, our own individual.
Did you read this? Go, bow your head to the place. Lord, thank you that another day that we can wake up and just serve you and just help us today with all our decision making and that we keep in mind that we're here to serve this county in the best that we can. Watch over and guide us and keep us safe. Jesus am I praying. There he is. Out of number four, public comments. Everybody sign up for public comments.
Right where Mr. Dyer?
In bed. He's okay. Took care of him, get out.
I didn't have much. Just not being here.
Out of number five, announcement possible discussion of items of public community interest sorts, no action or detection. I think we have a dead time meeting tomorrow. We're here. Sam Augustine, I need to be there. I'll take my eggs over easy because I'm about to leave, crack a dawn to get there. Well, better than that because I know.
What time do we leave?
No time.
Send off things for you.
Send breakfast to them. I'll just try to get away from that. I believe earlier in March, Augustine's probably the hardest that we had in the Commissioner's School. I mean, that kind of... All right, anything you answer, I want to share about what's happening in the community or...
You got two texts together, don't you?
I saw something and I haven't bought my tickets yet, but next time I go by the bank. I wasn't getting good enough. Yes, I see that one.
Oh, you got mine.
You got the one, you didn't buy the winning tickets?
My friend, Butch, he lent them, bought it for me.
So nice. That's a nice one. All right. I was thinking of something else, but go on, blank.
Well, they're good.
The snow was fun. They went asleep and all that with any loose power and stuff getting out there making snowmen with the granddaughter. It was nice. I think we made the right call because it was cold.
It was cold. It was nasty.
All right. We don't have anything else. I mean, I probably can always come back if y'all think of something we'll move down here. Out of number 10, consideration discussion possible vote through the incident response services. Don't see common ideas. I'll give all of an extra look. The name is four, but I didn't come up here because of the snow.
Oh. The beard's still trussed.
Is that this?
Yes, sir. I would say, right, I didn't push a tail. I want to tell a lie first thing in the morning.
What's your note? Tell us a little bit about this. This is on the cyber security.
Yes, sir. This is the Kostanti incident response. Out of number 10, Judge.
Kostanti.
Yes, sir. So, Judge, this is based off the network breach that we were dealing with last year. What the, what Kostanti has offered is to provide identity theft monitoring, credit monitoring to any person who may have been...
Anybody here from Kostanti?
I don't imagine, Judge. They just emailed me this morning, so.
So, we got it last year, later in the year, I guess. It was October 15th. I was on vacation for a couple of days. I heard, so it wasn't my computer that they hacked in. Mine was turned off. I was over there watching the, anyway, watching the whales or something like this. We had a little black breach to our computer at the sheriff's office, I believe. And there's all, you always hit spam or I SPAR malware or, you know, there's always somebody trying to snoop around any computer phishing or whatever they thought. This one went a little more deep and they, they sent messages after they logged in, I think over the weekend and got in there and tied up some of our files and did some other things. Demand ransom, yada, yada, yada. Drew around in the sand and confused fate. I actually did, I lost some files and some things. I had I cars all over for like my agenda or this or that, things I would click on and I don't know what they thought they were gaining, but that other than that, my life was a little bit miserable. Because you go click on something to open it and it, it with a smiley face or something like that come up, you don't have to pay if you want to open this file or something like that. So, I ended up just, well, I had the advice of IT couldn't use them. We weren't going to pay to get them back, so we deleted them. Anyway, so I think that your deal was a secondary.
That's, that's my question. This is this, you're the one that affected us at the courthouse?
Yes, sir.
There was an initial one, that was the sheriff's office, and this is one that is just the one that involved us at the sheriff's.
That might have been the secondary.
Yes, sir.
I've been working for the county on a lawsuit since 98. I had emails that stored back to at least 2004. Like if it was an issue of a lawsuit or something, that's way back then. Every email I put over in these sub folders and if somebody called and asked, hey, well, get a look at that on that blah, blah, blah case, I go over and click on it and refresh my memory and print out whatever. Everything before 2022, gone.
But Judge, the response that we have today, it's just, there's a statute that says that we're required to give notice to anybody who may have, you know...
I had a file and it had Ray McCuffin's name on it, say it. And it had some of his information on it. There's a possibility, I guess, that they got in there and my computer looked and see what Ray McCuffin's whatever blah, blah, blah information.
Yes, sir.
And there is, we have to give everybody, it's 306 names up. That's what I'm telling you. I never even seen the list or none of that stuff. I wasn't, for whatever reason, I wasn't in all these meetings y'all had. But we have to send out letters. The prudent thing is to send out letters so we can let everybody know, hey, we had a compromise and some of your information may or may not be effective. You don't even know what was and what wasn't completely, but if you were in, it's kind of like, I got a big old file kept in here and there's 300 files in it. They might have got some of that stuff. I don't mean they got all of it, but anyway, we have to let you know because that's just what some of these federal statutes say we have to do. So, that's what this is about.
Yes, sir.
But they also, I see they want, for the mayor, some 2,500 some odd dollars, I think. If we sign this agreement with limited amount of, what do you call it? Identity theft.
That's ours, I heard. Correct. So, there's a, there's a policy judge and it would basically be an insurance policy if somebody has been able to access their information through these files and that they took out a credit card or whatever in their debt. This, this would allow that person to access potentially qualify for up to a million dollars in insurance through, through this contract.
So, I see there's a form letter that I got signed, but there's a lot of blanks.
Yes, sir. I mean, I was just a...
One of the things we're doing to improve in this contract and the sending out of this form letter?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I have a seal along. If they're going to put it on my letterhead, it ought to at least be my letterhead. I don't know where they come from.
Sure. Now, they, we can absolutely do that. That's not a big deal. We can absolutely protect.
I'll stick on the next page and come show the date. Writing to inform you of a recent data security incident experienced in San Francisco. You're right, this says October 15th. That probably was the first.
Yes, sir.
I think that wasn't the first one because...
The, the first one happened earlier.
That, this has to do with this one that I was speaking about earlier. October 15th, that's what the letter said.
Okay.
I was there with another county official and he went, he said, man, I heard we got, I didn't get no... I heard we had a breach. I said, oh, guys, that was three months ago. I said, you're way behind, but it wasn't. So, it wasn't October 15th. So, what you doing, you think that we need to proceed?
We can. So, we have a statutory obligation to provide notice. So, and what Kostanti is basically going to do is offer all these services for them. Why that's important, make sure, is because the people who mostly had their information leaked were people who were doing open enrollment. They're all employees for the county. So, this would be something that we could protect our county employees.
So, where's the money coming from?
The 2,500? Up to the discretion of the court. Yes, sir. And that's, that's... Yeah, just, just to clarify, that's not 2,500 per person, right? That's 2,500.
Four, three, six.
Yeah.
It's a one shot there. Yeah, we're going to offer this service to the people that may or may not get hacked or something. I don't know how they even tie it back. Think their liability is pretty slim.
It is, Judge, but, you know, it's better than winning a lawsuit, not getting sued for a while.
Yeah, if something did happen, they could say, well, man, y'all didn't even go opposite this. You supposed to send me a letter and you didn't even do it. So, we're going to... That's what we're trying to do is comply with the statutes. We're trying to make sure to improve the response services, but we're trying to figure out where the money is.
How do you do legal services or legal claims?
Services. Either one of those are qualified. I'll say it. Not that, I know we need to do it. I'm irritated that they go in there and hack into our stuff to all best to the man at $100,000. We didn't pay them, but we didn't, I'm saying it didn't cost us money. We offered, we offered, but they didn't want to. We offered some way of getting it.
Right. Guess we were on their back burner. They never came around to that one.
You said it was a one time.
One time.
To handle it for how long?
I think we've been reached twice now. It has to do with the second one.
Yeah, the first reach was a little different because it didn't, it wasn't so much that was, it was basically the proprietary sheriff's office files. Right. This was people's information that were signing up for open enrollment. It was a little different information.
So, is this covering the second one?
Yeah.
This is October. This is the second.
Yeah.
Only covers the October 13th. If it happens to us again, it's going to be sent here.
Right. And hopefully, I think we've all...
Our car's got dinged up. We're going to fix the truck. If they run into us again, we got to shut up.
So, this, this incident will only cover, it's only covering that October 13th. It's only for those people on that. So, I mean, I'm not sure if they put a number on how long it covers for. It's just related to the incident, not necessarily the dates. Does that make sense?
Out of motion by Commissioner Matuno, second by Commissioner Mars. Are there any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Ayes have a two numbers, ayes have a zero. I'll figure out that. So, this, this form letter, like I say, has got, I don't think it was even set to be in a format that I can...
If, if there's any revisions you want us to include, Judge?
It's got red lines and lots of blanks and stuff. I'd like to see the file product and then I'll sign it.
Yes, sir.
I'd hardly extend it to where I could do that myself. It's a hidden.
Well, I'll, I'll email them back because it's been approved by the Commissioners Court.
We can get you a copy of my letterhead. Man, if it's done for me, I want to put it on my letterhead.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. Out of number 11, consideration discussion possible vote to approve and renew the Crown Castle Oakhurst Tower rental contract with San Jose County Emergency Services District One, approved by MOU and ESD on the tower. I don't see a contract door. Yes, I'm here. So, so we, we had a contract, Sheriff's Department had a contract with Crown Castle and the equipment was not being utilized. So, this court said, let's stop. So, we stopped paying because we couldn't sign the contract. The ESD wants to put some equipment on the tower and it's easier for us to lease the tower again than it is for them to go out and we did. So, we're going to have interlocal agreement with us so that we would lease the tower and maybe pay for it. That's what Mr. Smith said. Now, we've got, I think we actually still have something on the towers, I've been told. But basically, if we leased this thing for years and years, I don't know, at some point we were informed that we're not using that. And so, we didn't get in no big hurry, but after a year or two, we said, man, we just throwed money away. The ESD provided us to re, reinstate the contract and then they, they offered to sign an MOU memorandum of understanding that says whatever the cost is, they'll take it up. They'll pay for it. And then that, and also they'll be able to put their systems, repeaters or whatever, whatever them electronic parts are. And he said, Mr. Smith told me, I think we're at like, I could be off all the numbers, 179 feet. He's also negotiated where they can go up to 322 feet, which probably gives you, I would imagine the reason is to, you got better, you can reach out further with radios and three, how they said Mr. Mars was going to climb up there and hang it up there. I realize that MOU is not here, but what I suggest is we agreed, we should leave the contract. But yes, no, I agree with the contract and, and the MOU wants, they put it in my hand. I don't know, he was supposed to have, y'all got copies of the email. He was supposed to get me that stuff for full, but I, we just not going to sign it until they get it to us. That's one way to do it. So, there was a, when we, when we, this court decided to stop paying and running, we were still under contract, according to Mr. Smith. And we owed about five months of back payment. And he was wanting us to pay some portion of that. I'm just bringing that to the court's attention. He didn't mention that. He was asking that we pay some portion of that. Words come out of his mouth when I talk to him, it's not costing the county a nickel. But if it helps our constituents and if it's about what, $400 a month? I think it was three. I think it was three. It was a good range. He said it was up. I don't think it was. Twenty, 25, 26 hundred dollars a piece, he was, he figured he could afford it. They would pay half and we would pay half. But that's up to this court, since he's not here. So, recently, we canceled the contract at one point, the thieves stole the service. Sheeked those services out of the tower. There was no tower, there was no power on the tower. So, that's one reason why we said it's not doing us any good. There are fans around them? Yes. They cut the channel, they bring us in there. They stole the power. We got a generator off of it, too.
Were those people working?
It was up the north end of the county, yes.
I think that must have paid half of it. That's him, but pay the other half.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Mars, second by Commissioner. Commonly to renew the contract and an MOU with the ESD, pay half of that fee. If the MOU is going to say that they're taking over our position of the contract and that they're going to pay all the fees, this part about the way up in the back, please, he didn't tell me about that, but it's, I'm all right with that. If it's, that's really takes to get that back up and running, I agree. It is worth it. Well, it takes our services, that's what it's about. And I don't know, I had, we will need to propose paperwork, lease agreement, and MOU to present to the court for their review prior to the meeting. I told him, sent it. Who knows what happened with it? I actually talked with the lease, but you know enough about it. We all know what, they haven't seen the old contract. It's a standard tire rental contract. The MOU, whatever it says, the MOU says, the ESD will accept all financial responsibility. So, we're not going to pay any of your marks. We're not issuing them checks until, exactly, we get the contract and I'll sit if we, hey, and here, here if you found something in the contract, y'all see something there that gives you heartburn, let me know.
I feel like I understand what's going on. I talked to him.
Any other comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Ayes have a two numbers, five to zero. So, that's your map. If you can lean on it a little bit. I'm sure the lease is going to get back for us. I was checking up, calling. We don't want the intent, especially. We're not going to sign nothing. We don't want all three groups. Well, it says around here, hello, Michael. My name is Jack. Currently licensed number 462332 is holdover. I am proposing a five-year extension within, if it has to be renewable every year, could be all over. Five-year lease, renewable every year, in other words, the term is five, but law says if most, any contract we go into, we can cancel it because our money is generated every year by budgets and if it's not put in the budget, there's your house. All right. Out of number 12, consideration discussion possible vote to approve to request to get the attorney general judge, that's, I call him a master, CPS, and the CPS judge, set up the Local Government Solutions, LGS. Cost for each judge is $80 a month. Ms. Curry is not here. The district judge, the court, the county has bought, first one, what do you call judicial software to where we switched over from whatever we had before, clerk's insistence and it was all a good deal, this stuff's going to be, going to be so much easier and better to work with. That kind of remains to be seen, but it seems like it's working better. The DA uses it. We got computers in the courtroom and a lot of jurisdictions and in Montgomery, it's inclusive. They don't do paper anymore. I'm sitting up there looking at the case. I don't have to tell the clerk to have me the file. I can go on the lap, on the laptop, pull up the case. You could even sign judgments and things like that. We, this would basically allow them to use it. We're paying all these thousands of dollars for this software. I mean, we don't have none of the bells and whistles, Judge. Now, they can't even access the district judges' computer and they like to be, you know, to use it. So, they, if they want, if they have all of their office in Trinity or Pope, if they want to look at one of our cases, hey, we need all your calls and hey, what about, you going to sign this judgment? They can go on there and look at it.
That's, that's exactly what, Judge, so that's exactly what this would do. It's just $80 per user fee.
And the clerks? The clerks have all control over it. I can't even go on there and look at it. My clerk is supposed to find it or file and she'll send it right on up there. That's, that works for me, but they're, they're not, they're not here, so that's why I let it out. I'm looking most to prove that, but they're going to find out their faces now. I mean, is each, each part of face, they're going to, kind of, they never even come over and hooked up to carry it. I was busy the day they had that scoop. I had, I think she, somebody else was supposed to go to the scoop.
It's got, one of them went to the scoop, now she's the election secretary. Just tell me. Make sure you add multi-MFA to multi-factor authentication. So, usually it requires you to do your department email or they'll send you a text. So, it is a very secure system.
You want to get hacked into.
Haven't seen that happen in the other six secretaries.
Comes out of software, maybe.
So, did you, did I have to move it? No, it didn't. I got a motion by Commissioner Matuno. Seconded by Commissioner Swin. Any other questions? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any opposed? Ayes have it at two down, it's five to zero. We'll figure out how exactly, we got some areas, but if they got, if they have in their bunch, it finds something for that, and then we all share it with the cost. If they don't, they just don't. They got, they got eighty thousand dollar lines for quarter-party loggers, if they could ease up on that pen, they might be able to pay for that, I don't know. Eight times twelve is, what, ninety-six, nine hundred and sixty dollars? That's one or two cases. I'm just saying. Miss Audrey, who answers to the district judges, will figure out how we gonna pay for it. Out of number thirteen, consideration discussion possible vote to approve, approval of resolution to sell tax trust properties pursuant to tax code section twenty-four oh five C and D. The tax lawyer is over at a condo, she sent some kind of a memo, I got it, and no, ain't got here yet, so that, y'all may have, may not have seen the memo, I see, y'all got it, I think, good, good.
I got it.
All right, so, all about the memo, we got the. Please consider approval of a resolution and order for resale. Why they didn't send, this was on my desk this morning, so they didn't send it over because she wasn't anticipating. Let me read the memo. Please consider approval of resolution and order for resale of property sets in the county. Each property was struck off at the original tax sale as there was no bidder. I know what that means, I, I usually go to all the tax sales, it's been a long time since I've seen, they usually, there's guys that stand up there now and just hold a number up, tell everybody else how it's handled, and so I sort of believe there are any things that didn't sell, but these jokers are buying it all, but apparently there are some. The goal of the resale is to find a buyer of place each property on the tax road, in other words, to sell the property when it ain't on the tax road, if we're not collecting tax revenue for it. If the resolution is approved, properties will be advertised for bid posted for sale along with the regular scheduled tax sale to be hit on March fourth of this year. Uh, and there's a resolution that says on the twenty-second day of January, our regular scheduled meeting, a motion was made, second is the resale property described on exhibit eight. Let's see. First track.
We can't hear you.
I didn't hear you. You can't hear me?
No, no.
Oh, I just said there's a lot of water wood.
Oh.
The thing.
First track, State versus Stephen Watson, point five acres in the Jones survey, that's in point blank. Second track, I said State, County versus Vincent Clinch, Waterwood Lot Two. Third property, San Jacinto versus Kashi Curvavilla, Waterwood Lot Two, Block Nine. Next, San Jacinto County versus David Shelley, deceased, Lot Ten, Block Ten, Waterwood. Next, San Jacinto County versus Don Vitale, Waterwood, Lakeview Estates, Block Seven, Lot Seventeen. Next, Don Vitale, Lot Two, Block Seven. Uh, next bid, Don Vitale, Lot Seven, Block Eight. Next, San Jacinto County versus Dan Rondo, Lot Nine, Block Five. San Jacinto County versus Joaquin Mercia Diaz, Lot Sixteen, Block Four. Next one, San Jacinto County versus George Ripple, Lot Twenty, Block Five. Next one, San Jacinto County versus Lisa Heath. Here you go, Lots Two, Fifty-seven, Fifty-eight, Fifty-nine, of Tanglewood subdivision. Minimum bid at the tax sale was a mere fifty-five thousand dollars. Now they kept talking about putting a ten thousand dollars out. Home? I don't know about it, that's big. In Tanglewood, it must be a home, uh, but they've drawn out a ten thousand dollar minimum bid on that one. Next, San Jacinto County versus Natasha Mohammed, Lot Thirteen, Block Eight, Waterwood. Next, San Jacinto versus Ernest Sims Love, a fifty percent interest in point thirty-seven acres in the Messina Brown, that's right out here, on one fifty-six on the right, or could be on the left. It's a half interest in point thirty-seven of an acre. And then, San Jacinto versus Ernest Sims, half interest in point two oh one of an acre. I gotta see a couple more. Next, San Jacinto County versus David Hill, Lots Eight Forty-two, Eight Forty-one, and Camilla Twin Harpers below the dam, as well as Lot Eight Forty-three. Now, those three lots, they got paid at thirty-six thousand dollars. Excuse me, I wouldn't give you that for the whole block, anyway. And then, San Jacinto County versus Rufus Hicks, Lots Nine Nine Six, Nine Nine Seven, Camilla Twin Harpers, and it's named, they got it valued at twenty thousand four seven. Only reason I mentioned one of those, they got recommended, like that Watson property, they got estimated minimum, well, actually, an estimated minimum bid, that doesn't mean that's what we're, so, we, it's up to us whether we're gonna set minimum bids or not. It's gonna go, in other words, it's gonna go, I agree. The days of us, I've seen, I've seen, I've seen them sell stuff and run them up for fifty bucks in Waterwood, four hundred lots, four fifty-dollar pieces. Way back in the day when the, the world, the markets evolved. Anyway, it's a good idea to sell this stuff, get it back on, get it back on the tax road and let's.
They're the dollars, they're starting off with dollars.
They, they probably did their homework, and they know it's gonna bring it after them. We could, that, we could resell it again. They, they, they just said estimated minimum bids, they didn't say that we should set them. So I entertain a motion either way for this, I'll make that motion. I have a motion by Commissioner Mars.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Dominique. Any questions, any comments, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it at two down, it's five to zero. Okay, so there is a resolution. So I understand what you're saying, and I'm gonna make clear to the public, we as court, as this court, we do not pick and choose the properties that are foreclosed on. Tax attorney does that, and these are properties that have already been foreclosed on, and they have been at the, at the sale, and nobody has bought them, they revert back to the county, we hold them in trust, even though the school district may have more, have more actual value than we do, we hold them in trust, and then we resell them, uh, when the tax attorneys, uh, ask us to put them back on the.
In this case, March fourth.
Yes. Everybody good with that? Some of, most of them are probably, I don't know, some of them are probably, some of them are undesirable, some of them are undivided interest. Well, that's one of them, it's got fifty-five thousand in back taxes, well, that's why it didn't sell, but.
It is, one of its new dues.
This will wipe them out, but this one, uh, when it sells at a tax sale. If Waterwood was named in suit, they don't name them, then they preserve their right to collect their dues, or whatever. Most times, they all kind of waive their dues, once, once you give them an order, correct?
Uh, it depends on if it sells for more than what tax, taxes are owed, and we not have more than what dues are owed.
If they got excess proceeds, they pay everybody.
But we have an automatic lien, we have an automatic lien on those, so.
Yeah, but you all have been foreclosing on some yourself, these aren't some of them. Number fourteen, consideration discussion possible vote. The confirmed distance at Bill Hales Road has been maintained for at least the past eight years by the same group. Question?
So there was some discrepancies on the measurements of the road with how far the county maintained, and so my main payer operator did a affidavit.
How long's he been working there, girl?
Eight years that he's been maintaining this road to two point four.
She's pretty slick, you notice the question, always how long's he been working there, and she went right to the point.
Um, so the road was, all this time after two point four had been considered private, and for some reason that had changed in the pipeline's chemistry, so landowners had a problem with not getting paid as they had prior, because that's their road, and it had not been maintained by the county.
Okay, who knows that guy like that? I can assure you, though, if you go on the text off road and get, or able to pull up the right map, they got a map, the whole state of Texas, and if you focus in on your county, you can find the roads, and it'll have, if it's in color, it'll show a blue line that shows the part of the county claimed. I can assure you, I didn't print no map out and get my ballpoint pen out and throw in and nothing, I printed out what was on there, so.
Well, and we went and measured it, and also we had.
You checked it out, and where he said, this is where we've been stopping, we never went past here, that's what.
And heard my landowners over here, they all also signed that that's never been done
That'd be, so is that what the ticket editor says, two plus seven?
We had several different ones, one said point nine, one said two point four, one said two point eight, and one said two point nine, which would have been passed the gate down.
Two point eight, two point nine got put on there fairly recently, and I don't know how they got it put on there. So, so the gate is, is right on the line?
At two point eight, the gate is. We even have one of them that says two point nine, which is.
Yeah, but it, that's only five hundred and something feet, yeah. It started, it started in the middle of the stop on the road, you know, so. So as long as, whoever you understand, if this gate, it can't be a federal, period.
It's, it, it's, two point four is where they've turned the main thing around all these years, they've never, I don't know.
I'm not sure that's so, or not, there are counties in Texas, in West Texas, that have gates up there, and you open a gate, and they still let cattle run. We got a couple of roads in this county that, there's a category there, and cattle still run through there. Well, you should be your percent, not your percent.
I also checked at Ms. Wright's computer, and it has not come through the board, so I checked that also.
I know it hasn't come since eighteen, I don't know what that's between fifteen and eighteen, but I, anyway, I'm just, I appreciate you taking the bull by the horns and getting a strike, I know the landowner, appreciate it.
I was gonna say that, that they really did a lot of work themselves, and they really
So this affidavit, basically, uh, we, this number, uh, what do we need to do? Entertain a motion to, uh, so what is the distance that you're for?
Two point four.
Two point four, that's what I was.
Heard the DA, he said we really didn't have, we just wanted it in, you know, the court, uh, that it has came through here that time.
No, not, not, it doesn't mean anything to the DA, but I've been practicing law and researching titles for forty years, it's a good idea to put that in the deed. And pipeline, if they come along here and they're looking to lease your land or do something out there, and they, they see this is in there, know that nothing like this will happen again.
I don't want it to happen to them, whatever we make a deal on.
Listen, I make a motion to put a two point four.
I have a motion by Mr. Mars, seconded by Commissioner Sweeney. Uh, any other questions, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, ayes have it at two down, it's five to zero. Is there anything to cover up on this issue? We did, we didn't take a permit for road crossing, please?
The pipeline company was, they didn't want to change anything, because they're wanting to come on.
Right, and that, did, did we take a permit, please?
We took a bond.
What about road crossing? They're supposed to pay twenty-five hundred dollars crossing roads. I, I assume that we had taken that, and if we, if we did, Tricia needs to get that back, go and then make it. That ain't on the agenda, just want the big refund.
I, I, I talked to the, the head.
I'm not saying refund, nothing, it is.
No, they, I talked to the head, and they are wanting to start in February, and they, whatever on our bond was more than they, you know, than we, they had to pay, but since we, they don't wanna wait to get it done, they want to get the pipeline.
They gonna lose more money than wherever that little termant fee is. They don't have to care. They've already paid the loan, they're just not the man to give it back.
It was like twenty-six thousand dollars difference on the bond, and they don't even want that.
Yeah, the cost of the loan ain't twenty-six thousand, it's, it's, it's a few hundred dollars or so.
But they, they just want their.
I'm good there. You good with that? We're good.
Okay.
Are they good with it?
And I got it on email.
Just wait a little bit. Okay. Well, uh, if we sell it, ain't nothing else to sell. No, you, you have to. See, this, this list here is March nineteenth, I think there's, there's a lot of these lists of, that's.
I have several in the office.
Whatever I got on my calendar here that says two point, it's in three different pieces, but if you add it all up, it's two point.
I have options, and I'm in.
All right. Y'all good with all that? Our constituents from Bill Hales Road? Appreciate y'all's patience, I told you she'd get her done.
She's, she's come here, not stumbled through it, but we got it. Thank you.
That's right, thank you for that. Yeah, absolutely, thank you for that. Out of number fifteen, consideration discussion possible vote for approval for the expansion of parking lot and building for Evergreen Baptist Church at seventy-six twenty-one, Highway one fifty west, Coachman, now. When I first read this, I started to draw a line, but I thought, that's not the objective of it. County ain't gonna have nothing to do with doing the work, you know, we're just, they want, I guess, get approval to do it, and that's all we're doing. When I first saw it, I thought.
I did, too, that's what I thought.
Number of people thought, excuse me, going out there with a main sander and going leveling. We caught that acting. We tried that, I can... We tried, let's see, Mr. Rosecrans was a disentrist. We were little league, the little league was building a new ball field, and we were going, the commissioner was okay with taking, was it some city property, taking the main sander and leveling off the new ball field, and he said, "Not no, but you know what, no," and they wouldn't let us do that. And I probably, I still think would have been bad because it was city property, and it was an interloper, we had an interloper, but, for whatever reason, that got shot down, so...
The school just told us that we could do that.
You can't let schools in county and cities and all that. We got interlocutors, we all are constipated. They just want approval to do whatever they're doing.
So, um, actually initially, we thought it was just to renew the parking lot. Well, they are expanding wings onto the building to expand it, and I don't have anything for our county engineer at this point, so we're gonna have to... Because he was thinking it didn't need a permit because it was just a parking lot, but it is not just a parking lot.
Who thinks they need a permit just to do a parking lot?
No, no, they're, they're expanding the building.
Yeah.
That's a separate issue. That's a separate issue. She told it just to park a lot at first.
It says park a lot, it says park a lot and building.
That's because I knew that it was gonna be an expansion because I go to church there, but Mr. Wood was not informed on that, so...
No matter if he was involved, if we, if we, they're asking for permission to expand it. Who are probably wants, I think about...
Does it need a permit or...
You'll need a permit for the building, but you do not need a permit for a parking lot.
So, so I'm gonna ask this question.
Well, is the building gonna expand more than fifty percent of the existing structure?
Because that's the rule.
They consented, they said they wanted it to be...
She said at first they was asking for the parking lot.
So Mark was going back and forth with them on that, and at the time, he said it didn't need a permit.
She was far sighted enough and astute enough to know, they might want to do a little more, and she put building in here at her request, and she's trying to look it up for them, and that's nothing wrong with that.
But I don't think that's, um, someone has to...
Yeah, and I mean, just like, it's all private property, the church property.
Yeah.
County, they, they, they don't, they don't...
Except for what, gonna need a permit?
Yeah.
So that's where I was trying to get them, probably.
Churches are using it.
We know you could approve. What, what, uh, other... Yeah, but I'm trying to fix.
I appreciate it, I'm sorry.
Uh, we have nothing to do with that parking lot, we need to prove that for.
We don't? Have you been down there? I think there's already a form built and all that, and I'm just trying to not slow them down, that's all.
A form that you want the parking lot or the building?
We don't approve, it's not like we approved the size of the building, I mean, we require everybody else to do it. We approved, I didn't say that we shouldn't require perhaps a permit.
So we just say, well, we can come back to it?
They don't need our approval as long as they get a permit, is all we're trying to say.
Yes, that's why I was asking.
Of course, that needs to be involved. Sir, we don't need to be involved.
Of course, that needs to be involved.
They have called me a number of times because somebody, and I think it's their own engineer, told them they had to do a retaining, big overtanning farm, they're on top of a hill, right there, it's doing God's work.
That was before, they were gonna do a whole new structure out there, but I understand it changed, I said, "We're just gonna expand on what we got."
But it was, it was their engineer that was telling, not the one that ever told them that. I kept telling them that, and I, that, uh...
It's quite confusing.
Mr. Wood's telling the same thing. He did tell them, said the building was saying it.
It's quite confusing. It was Ann's bells, and now somebody else is handling it, so...
So we don't need no accentating on this? We don't need no accentating or anything?
I don't think so, but if you want...
No accentating.
I'll second since I'm... Work in progress.
Hey, y'all had a blind to a permit, and y'all were told, "No," he said, "If we had no more churches up, everything, nothing that," so... We don't need to override some action, some, uh, permits, so... I'm pleased there's no action necessary on out of fifteen, no action needed.
What is that?
It's probably just, yeah, I suppose. Okay. Out of number sixteen, consideration discussion of possible vote to agree that variance to split one acre track out of a four acre track in the Jonathan Collard survey owned by Charles Eldridge, located five thousand nine forty-five, that's just down the road from the house.
Was he selling it to one of his kids? He's selling it.
He's way behind on his taxes, and he's selling it to pay, pay his taxes, no trouble.
Does he have access to it?
I mean, I, he's front on the highway, I mean, I can't tell him on this one. Well, it shows the road up there, it's got a little bit of finish.
Oh, this is the same road?
Yeah, that's the road they curbed from.
Yeah.
It serves awful damn, they live up there all night.
Oh, pissy. Have they got Charles? Are you talking like the bricks?
Uh, they tell me, though, that they were, it's all out of one track, they haven't got, give a release, and it's not gonna pay all the taxes. I don't know, that's, that's up to the tax office.
It's up to the seller.
I make the motion again.
Thank goodness, I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Latuino, a second by Commissioner Dominique. Got one acre out of this, whatever, I don't remember many, man, it's so small, I can't...
Isn't Livingston Survey that could, was Dr. Noel?
Charles, yeah, Charles Franklin, that's his brother.
Is there a lady still running that for him?
No, Earl, anything got nothing to do with it.
Yeah.
You kidding? She was with the other firm, correct?
Yeah.
I don't know, I didn't know that. Susan Johnson is the butcher's wife, she's the owner of the forest, I know. Can I take a vote?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, aye, that you not my style, after zero.
How would you?
She's scared.
Out of number seventeen, consideration discussion of possible vote on the preliminary plan for Liberation Ranch, the possible final plan, approval for completion of San Simi County Appraiser District and E S, Works and Services District, can't reach it. I don't have nothing on that, I believe.
And it's huge.
This one, that's a good, they don't see it, so they gonna do anything.
Like the big truck? Oh, oh, I see what you're talking about. So that's your last one, I think. That's one of Mill Hales, right? That's one of Mill Hales? That's one of Mill Hales?
On one, oh my God.
Is that it?
What about some beyond one, is here ready to build something? That ain't nothing, that's not doing. We only have one of these.
I, I thought all of these, all five that he was bringing on, about seventeen also, that'd be easier to...
I see one, one of the bricks, and they're wrecked. In the roof, did Miller survey? Where is that? This is Gilbert Erst's old place. Gilbert Erst's place. We're always getting a...
Oh, wow. Oh, Jesus.
I see all of the drainage stuff, I see all of that.
Well, they've got today.
Yes, sir, we've been working with the county for about three months now on drainage, so we...
Looks good.
So we made some middle on...
Saw a flat at that point.
It looks good.
Have you seen it? I had seen it, but I'm not sure you're on our proof.
Why would you say that?
They're, they're putting in a road in there, it's not showing on the plaque, it doesn't have a name. And also they'll show the five foot property line.
The side of worship.
They don't show the five foot property easement around the property lines, and the road is not showing on the plaque.
Yeah, don't show them the plaque, yeah.
Might be able to get it at preliminary, but you can't find it. I don't think you wanna do that if you know there's a road going down, but the, the whole thing's road, unless I'm missing something here.
Yeah, I'm gonna say pavement.
The whole east side.
That's a road?
It's road, isn't it? Isn't this Gilbert Erst's old place?
So John Warren Road currently exists about through Lot Seven, and then it turns ninety degrees to the east.
John Warren?
John Warren Road.
Which way are you coming from?
Yeah.
The south?
I'm coming from north to south, lots one through seven, there's existing pavement for John Warren Road, and then it turns east, goes due east.
Ain't no existing pavement.
Well, existing.
Dirt, dirt, and it's rough as a cow, but she's probably working on it. Last time, before you go out and go. I, I know where the road is, no, it comes over here at Gilbert's Lot, it comes in like that, right, uh... What is this now? Alvin Ry, uh, Alvin Ry's, right here, coming in there like this, and then it turns. Back here, ain't no roads. You gotta show the road, that's what he asked.
You wanna see pavement on the plaque?
That's what he was asking. We're not going through any plaque that don't show that all these people have access.
Okay, well, the, the plaque that shows an access easement, so that's, that's what is showing to take care of that, and we...
That must be this here.
It is, with the dots.
Yes, sir.
On the left side. That's the whole front side of the road.
We don't show how wide it is, that's easement.
So that's part of our construction plans, but if I need to show it moving forward, I can do that.
You're gonna have to put in a, a road up in county specs, and we're gonna have to set a bond on the road.
Yes. We're all working down there, drainage.
Now, they got the topo stuff on here, it shows elevation, you don't know it.
I see it.
The whole, well, it changes, I didn't realize it was that much of a drain. Hydrology's are correct, they've done a good job. It goes up to about three oh nine, three ten, at the highest, two seventy down here on the back side.
Quite a bit of relief.
The building can't stand, so...
Yes, yeah, and you also need to show Lot Seven, eight, Lot Seven and eight, I guess what you're saying, right? That's where the road goes, John Warren?
Yes, sir, I, I can't remember if it's seven or eight where it turns and goes to east.
You're gonna put that out there, in the plaque, it'd show that that's a sixty foot easement. And then those lots may not be big enough. They're five acres, oh, they're plenty of five acres. But it can't show, John Warren Road hits it right about where Gilbert's Lot is. When you drive up to the property, you can see it, it's a cap that, it's a block, you know, where you pinch out, and then the road turns ninety degrees and goes north, early due north. It shows up here on Lot Five, till it gets to Iron Nissen. Now, and Iron Nissen is a county road, like, the road also continues on through Gilbert's Road.
Yeah, you're right, John Warren Road, rather. You can, uh, just hear this going, we used to park right here, so it has a road.
Now, yes, you, and we walked through...
I want to see, forget it on the right side, you got sixty foot, sixty foot access easement.
Hey, man, be here, come here, man. These lots up here all touch the road.
Question.
I don't know why they got a road from here.
I just want this one.
There's a county road on this.
Is this gonna be a road from here?
Goes it on five. Man, there's no written right away, trust me, that's county road.
We've got, I guess, this...
This, uh, the county road actually, this property goes on the other side of county road on some of the lots.
Oh, y'all look at that.
There's difference between an access easement versus a right of way. If it's an access easement, it stays within the lot property. If it's a right of way, it comes out of the property, it is dedicated to the county. So the question is, if we do a right of way destination, is the county also gonna maintain the road?
That's this road right here, but they don't say on here how wide it would be, that'd have to be sixty feet.
And then from here.
That's, that's coming from government. So what is, what is this, Alvin Nissen?
It's, if, if Iron Nissen, this way, and then we turn, turns to John Warren.
Iron Nissen goes down there about a mile or two, there's four, five, six houses down there. We actually had an issue down there once, uh... So the road been turned off, Iron Nissen. We had to get it surveyed and everything, this had a road post down there.
Oh, well, this is...
The road, the road comes in, like, right up here. I, I don't know, I think it's this line down here where she is, right, as you show that, as you show right where the road comes out. You see where it says Francis Cowes down there? That's where John Warren comes in, because they front, I'm just put, I'm just put on these.
I think they lost, and they knocked down some security on the left side of the county road.
No, they're, they're right, that's where they want to move it, so they're... These tracks up here. These tracks up here. Road. Looks like they come straight across here and come just to catch these.
At least the rest. If it is.
So they don't.
It's a county road. This portion of the road over right here is a. Putting off to sixty feet.
Right, but we call it an access easement, that makes it right of, that makes it right of way. So then it's out and.
They don't generally approve them where they have right of states. There's hundreds of, hundreds of, they have a lot of them that ship it home. The private home, not nine, seven inches that we've approved.
Sure enough.
Yeah. Whoever parks them, that's the biggest mistake we ever made.
The property, start right to the center, both the center and the county road. They still own the property to the sort of road.
That's what we're. What she's saying is, if it's a county road, she's gonna have to carve the head of this lot one.
You can do it that way.
She gonna have to carve it out on lot one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight.
She don't have to. I mean, she can leave it in there and say it's a county road, isn't it?
Sixty feet is a county road. He needs to make some kind of a notation on this plaque so when a guy buys this, he don't try block, block, block with that.
That's right. I agree.
That's right. No offense, Mr. Donald.
No, I'm.
It's.
I was so scared. I was a cool ass.
I think we still buy it on that one. Yeah, 'cause there's Gilbert's, man, that's where it seats right here on that. Y'all approve it. There's, there's ours a signature. Y'all approve of that. We can't have that. Yours signature would go on here too?
Oh, no. All I'm saying is, we don't want to say.
I'm saying, I don't want guys, we approve this, there's your signature.
I agree. No, no, no. We're, we're.
Be on here.
Absolutely. That's what we.
I think, I think they got that too, right? So I'm just curious, you wasting a whole lot of your land here by making a road from here on both sides. Why would you do that?
Both sides.
You're showing a road on the, on the top side and the west side on lots one through.
No, that's a proposed, uh, priority.
That's an existing, uh, mine, you see.
So you don't have a road up here at all? I thought, I thought these dots were sure. You're right, that's where that big, so you can't put a road right there.
Right, correct.
So you're gonna make the changes and bring them back?
Yes.
You all seen the other changes?
Yeah, you haven't said nothing. There's some, you're supposed to put some certifications on here about where the water and sewer is available. Now, you touched on the sewer, but there's no city water out there.
There's a one five oh.
One five oh, all the way back there?
Well, they're, they're working with the developers and send water.
Oh, wow. Well, this says it on here, on eleven, water?
Eleven.
Actually, eleven's on here. Eleven has, says electricity. Okay. You got two elevens, by the way. Well, I didn't see, water will be provided by one five oh. Okay, so we're gonna approve it and says that, and they are paying one five oh, and all these people are stuck out. We need to approve it when it says there's water out.
Yeah, that's why they, or they.
They give you a letter.
They give you a letter saying that we are.
Then we can serve as all unfortunately. Because if we approve it based on somebody says they're gonna do, and then it don't happen, then we get a bunch of them hearing court complaining to us.
We ain't got all of that. We can't take it back.
I'm writing notes.
We can't take it back.
The lots are big enough to drill their own water wells.
That is an option.
Oh, yeah, 'cause they're on sewer.
Yes, yes.
Have they had a flash tag on these lots yet?
Yes, so they're looking at about thirty-eight thousand to forty thousand per acre.
Whoa. What do y'all come and shepherd? So you, uh, you're gonna, this, this piece over here on the east line, you're gonna make sure that you're showing that's at least as far as, that's county road. I'm telling you, it is. It's been county road for years. You gotta show where's your access, or you got sixty-foot access easement coming from where John Warren Road intersects it. Going down the east side down here. So I see a fifteen-foot drainage easement. We normally have, you have to show some proposed drainage easements on here as well.
Yes, so that, that is a proposed drainage easement?
Yeah, but it's only, it's only covers lots ten through fourteen.
Correct, 'cause that's where we have a break in the drainage, where we're carrying it down to drainage easement at the bottom.
Regardless, you're gonna have to show what you're, we don't approve unless you got some type of a drainage easement. Is that what that is on the west line, that little, that's another dark line in between the rusty line? Is that a drainage easement as well?
No.
No, that's a gap of the, between the property line and where the San Houston liquor, San Star.
So, yeah, that's one thing, five-foot drainage between, they got a fifteen-foot one over here, they must be gonna put a, are you putting the biggest drainage pond in the back?
There is a detention pond on lot fourteen.
Yes.
Here's a, here's already, there's a pond up there about five or six.
There's also one on lot, lot six. That all comes from our hydraulics and hydrology study.
I've been having slipped in there and caught one of them beds. Yeah, there, 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 you have a pond out there.
Wow.
It looks good. You just got a few things to tweak, maybe that's all. What was your name?
Angie, sorry, I'm Angie Tanta, with Spirit Point and White Point Engineering, I will.
Also, there's a lot on, across the way, if you'd rather.
You're with Texas Professional?
No, they're the surveyor. I'm with the engineering company, Spirit Point.
Spirit Point.
Possessing posture.
I see you here. That's probably.
Yes, sir.
That's the Texas Grand?
That's it. Don't worry, I'm gonna need them on all those.
Are you familiar with our starting for building, you know, a caliber of road? It's gotta be, on the books, it still says chicken steel at a minimum. Some of the commissioners stepped forward and said, I ain't proving up with that stuff. Unless we change the policy, chicken steel is still acceptable here.
I think it's up to the commissioner, huh?
No, not if you bring a policy. But we usually go with whatever the commissioner says.
So I don't wanna say some of them policies not be effective.
All I'm trying to say is perhaps we're not gonna let nobody put chicken steel.
Change their.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree with that.
So we all gonna come back and like redo the John Warren Road too and make it more steadily or?
Really?
I mean, to me, if I was a commissioner, I'd be trying to get that down.
I'm willing for all these.
We'll see what he's trying to say is more traffic, get on the road, works it gonna get.
Yeah.
So we all be working with them, folks, maybe they can.
We have a road. Redo the entire road from lot one all the way even the new road.
And I know you say that it's currently being county contained. Will it continue to be county contained after the developer comes in?
What happened? Every caliber there is. So if you want better, then that's what I'm saying. Now might be the time to say, let's, let's react this road and bring it up to standard.
We had an article talking about it. But I didn't know what mine.
So you're gonna make, the new road, is it gonna be a private?
So the road that comes up from the south to Joy where John Warren currently is, that would be a private road for those lots?
From where now? Where? From John Warren turn, and it goes down to that, that's lot fourteen. It could be private, but it's gotta be built to county standard.
Yes.
Commissioner requires asphalt. I guess that's what we have to be. I know that sounds ridiculous, but you're going on a dirt road with some rock on it, but that's just the way the rules are. We can't control, we don't have the money to go pave every road, bring it up to our standards, but we can require you. So I believe you told me last time you were here that like in Texas Grand, it's in Walker County, y'all actually did the base work for the roads and you didn't actually pave them until after all construction was completed.
Right, yeah, so those larger subdivisions, that's what we'll do. We'll, we'll let the large equipment drive on that base the entire time until they're out of there and then we'll do the, the final. On this particular subdivision, they're gonna be in and out. But on those larger ones, yeah, we'll let them work that, work that base out.
You say they're gonna be in and out, but that, that road in front of lot one's gonna catch it. Is this gonna get the, the construction traffic for all fourteen lots?
True.
Well, really, the only thing that we're doing in there for construction is to improve that road.
Yeah, no, but I'm, somebody vows.
The residence.
You tell about Texas Grand, I saw the way they put it.
Yeah, this is.
They put all asphalt in there and I don't, my trucks in there. I mean, that was already done because all the lots had to be built down, right? So here comes the concrete, everywhere back to where it's in there, we say, it'd be nice to.
Well, and a lot of the people buy these lots and they sit there for year two, three or four before they actually build a house, so, I mean, at some point, they got.
They don't pave them until the subdivision's built down. Roads, infrastructure. So.
Right, correct, yes.
But I took it that you were talking about the home.
No, they, they just, like for Texas Grand, which there's so many different sections they're working in, if they're working on a section up here, make that drive through this section with the heavy equipment, they'll wait to pay that road until they're out of there with the heavy infrastructure construction.
You probably, you need, you're gonna need to show the road where it actually is. Because lot eight, or the, or this track goes across the road, this, your colleague told me, he held a little sliver right there in the bend of the road on the other side. You'll see that. Or the surveyor, I see it. It's big enough, it shows, it even shows up on the appraisal document. I've seen the survey that, that indicates that. This don't, don't show it. That's. All the easement they got, this is the time, when you're doing things like this, you've just got just a little bit of easement there. You ain't got enough room to pull ditches. This is where you sit down with them and say, well, you know, sure would be nice if we had, if we got, what do we got, nineteen feet or something that's actual, we, that we get, if you wanted more right of way to maintain property digits, they'd probably be all for them. More of that, it's all flat out there, and the more they could do to make it where that water gets played and rather make property more feelable since it first goes.
But I'm the same, we just stay, we stay, we stay.
As far as you know, the water. We have, I think, we're required to make sure the water is accessible when we approve development.
Yes, sir.
So we need some sort of a commitment from the water company that they actually are, which is, you know, you know what I'm talking about.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a checklist or can you, I mean, there's a checklist in the subdivision application rules.
We should have, uh, had an application and I don't have an application.
Yeah, we, we submitted all of that on the night of January, some curious word.
We have Leonard, who sent us here. The plaque wasn't ready. I'm sorry.
I think we were both.
You're an engineer.
Yes, sir.
There's our engineer. Bring you up today.
I, I thought he and I were in that email or we not? No, there was a physical package with me on the night of January, though I've got a mind of what that meant, because we submitted every question. Your game board? Or in person? Is that, did you bring it to me?
They need to bring it, or send it electronically to the permit department. That's the one shaking her head there, that's just.
I don't know where, okay.
It's gotta put, that's what we pay. They don't know anything about the rules and regulations on how to get a permit. You don't need your permit, get taken that over. Whose hand is this? Yours?
Thank you.
What you got? Anyway, all right, thank you. We look forward to working with you.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
This lot's around through the commission. Of course, I don't mean you get any more connection, it's one area, I know you'll see.
Thank you all for helping me. Lord, you.
So it's got one of them now. It's not a, there's two kind of, this is a fusion lines and then there's, there's a, you can't get a, huh? Very big, big old plots, this big.
That's, that's.
Transmission line. It's got the transmission line. Yeah, it runs right down the side of, I don't know how close you could build to a transmission line.
You have to be, like, at the, your meters.
Yeah, but I mean, if you walk out and say, I guess you, the deal out there and lay out there and stuff, they.
There's five extra lots.
They got, they got, they got pretty good. Out of number, so no action. They got some things to go. Out of number eighteen, consideration discussion possible vote to the president for Trish McKenzie-Haw as a dispatcher. Sure, that's somebody that left and now they won't come back.
Hello, I'm Emily and this is Maggie, the supervisor of a dispatch. Mackenzie Ryan worked with us over the year and she went to go say her telecommunicator.
Y'all been working there for a while?
Yeah, I've been there for almost five years.
That's what I thought. How long you been there?
Been there for about a year.
So tell me about Mackenzie, when did she leave?
She left seven thirty-one of twenty twenty-four.
Seven thirty-one.
She left because she didn't pass her telecommunicator final test.
I'm sorry?
She left because she didn't pass her final test at the end of her year.
Oh, yeah. She didn't pass the test?
Yes, sir.
And she passed it now?
Yes, sir. She went to Liberty County and they were, they offered to retake the test and she passed it.
Now she's licensed?
Yes, sir.
Can I get a name in on something?
Yeah, that's great.
So I'll make the motion, but I do want to call out something. If, if a person retire or quits and they, and they get paid out, that's what the policy's about. We don't want, we don't want everybody racking their crop time and vacation and then quitting, staying out and kind of running back to work. For one thing, and the next thing is if they draw the retirement within like, I think it's sixty-two days, I think it's a penalty that we have to pay, so. We wanna make sure that they're not, definitely not within that sixty-two days, I think. So there's our credit, if they quit on the seventh month.
So I'm like that motion to approve. It's been five months since she quit. Have a motion by Commissioner Tuno, second by Commissioner. I know the sheriff is. And she's now certified, right?
Yes, she is, she's.
Good, that's good.
She wasn't able to make it, but she still.
Sometimes what you hear ain't always a truth.
So I'm on Mackenzie, I'm Maggie.
Oh.
Yes.
You're Maggie, you're not Mackenzie.
I'm not.
That's what I thought.
I'm assistant supervisor.
Yeah, she's been there for a while. Any other comments? All the same, just say aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it, you now must file a zither.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right, I didn't put this on, I don't know if there's anything on here or not, because we're. Nineteen, consideration discussion possible vote to approve necessary actions for purchases of the office long star grant. They applied for that long star grant back to twenty-two, twenty-three, and we didn't get the grant. So we applied for it the next year in twenty-four, and surprise, surprise, we got the grant. One million dollars, as they said, another brother, we're out there, ten dollar point two. And we proceed, we did that, I think the award came to him late September, early October. And, and the grant period is from like July through August, and not one thing has been done on the grant. We, we need to move forward, or we're not ready or something?
It's actually September to August thirty-first, so we are already.
Four months.
Four months behind.
Right, because some of it's salary, and that was a, a year's salary, four months of it, we, we. I don't know how we're gonna spend that, we'd have to, I don't know, but there might be a way to do it, but there, there was, and I just. I had my numbers off a little bit, I was saying, they planned to buy, I heard half million dollars worth of cars, it's two hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of cars. Maybe we can take that four months' worth of salary and buy cars with it too, that's kind of whichever direction y'all got. I put this on here just in case y'all are ready to make any purchases. I've been communicating back with the sheriff and the chief here lately, but. I just, we just now got a. Call where he could go online on the, in the portal and. But you got, I hope you got a person that's, Miss Forman out there, or whoever it is, that's, you don't. Have some experience within portals, I mean, it, it, it's a, I use that a couple of times. What do you want, what I need to click on, you know? Is, is Mary's one?
Yeah, Mary's part of it.
She, she's the one that submitted for it. She admitted, she put it all in there, but she, I talked to her, she hadn't. Up until the end of the year, she hadn't been told to put anything else in there, but I case she was in there and then I certified it, and it's just been sitting there. And we don't wanna, we're kind of behind an eight ball, we wanna, I put this on there so anytime we have an agenda, if you got stuff you need approved.
And they have been updated, Sheriff Houston's name has been put in and he's, he gets the notifications now, so.
So we, you have any idea when y'all are gonna start buying, purchasing stuff?
Yes, sir. On your next agenda, you should have our car requests and also I have, I already have all the equipment.
There was license plate readers and things of that nature.
Equipment, I have the computer jet, I'm still working on getting the quotes for the computers. But I know the equipment for the cars and I know what cars we're getting, I'm just waiting for the quotes for the cars, and once I get those, then I'll bring them to you.
Okay, you say quotes for the cars, so you can do it by quote if you're. Getting the quotes off of Byboard or H Jag or those state approved purchasing. I don't know. Ready with all this, I'm sure you probably are, and I'm not trying to talk down, I'm just, we that people that's been here ten years, right up here going. Ah, so to buy something because they got a good deal and that's great, but you, you don't work that. It's either gotta be bought to the Byboard or we have to go out for bids.
Yeah, we can do the Byboard.
Okay, okay. So at this time, there's nothing that you got ready to approve?
For that grant? No, sir.
Okay, all right. If it's same with y'all, I want to leave that, leave, leave that on, or kind of like we've done in the past, this case I'm doing. Yeah. Next, twenty, consideration discussion and possible vote to discuss and approve the three bids we obtained to compete with Quong's current invoice, see if we keep around it. Their option. To fit our needs. Chief Dogg.
Y'all that don't know me, I'm Stan Dogg, I'm the chief deputy for Simpson County Sheriff's Office. On the three bids, on Quong, they gave us, they gave us a bid.
First thing? Is it number, okay, all right, that's number one. Go ahead, sir.
All right, I have three bids for Quong, they gave us a bid, and the bridge is for. For right off the bat, they gave us a bid of a forty-nine, dual, dual factor authentication, forty-one Microsoft. Their bid monthly at that rate was thirteen thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-nine cents a month to take care of us. Well, that's, that's.
Ah, two IT sequences of that.
Well, yes, sir. That to me is, is, is where we're at now. Okay, that's not when we're gonna be up to running full staff.
Where we're at is a contractor forfeit approved that they just.
Yes, sir. Like, that's, that's, that's all before me, sir. I'm going back to today. Yeah, today's deal is that. That's all, that, that's what they quoted us, they can't. And my rule is, is that when we're at the full staff with the grant, everything running, we can run up to, up to about eighty computers. That means every laptop in every car, all the detectives, every desktop in the, in the office. If we're running at full staff, we're running by anyone, computers. Everyone, every, every computer we have needs to have dual authentication. Because if you run people's time needs.
So the people that are working there, they work at tens, twelves, eights, whas?
Okay, people work the office, they work tens. Patrolmen or twelves. Yeah, depends on, are J's or twelves?
Okay.
And so it depends on what you.
They'll not work twenty-four hours a day, though.
We are working twenty-four hours a day.
Not one guy is not working twenty-four hours.
No, sir, our department.
Trying to make a point. They're gonna work, the guy that comes in on the night shift's gonna sit down at that same computer that the day hand is working at, so why would we need? It look like they're charging for every single person and every single, it don't be by the computer.
Right.
They're overcharging, another bunch is overcharging.
Okay, but the problem is, each deputy is assigned a car, each car has a computer, okay? Each, each laptop in that car has tagged that security, okay, when they're on the street, okay? When they come into the office after you arrest somebody and you're in there doing your paperwork in the office, each one of those desktops, which is only, there's only five in there. Those, when they're sitting in there working, finishing up paperwork, those gotta happen. Then you got our six detectives that's gotta have computers. And they also have laptops, because when they leave that office and you're out investigating, you can't take your. Your, your desktop with you, you don't. So you have to have your laptop. And then like myself, the sheriff, we all have laptops in our cars too, and we also have desktops. The only thing that don't have.
Did y'all sign when y'all came in? That we get billed for seventy-seven computers?
Oh, no, no.
I don't think we got seventy-seven computers, do we?
Oh, I got, I got, I got lots of computers. Now, they may be old, they may be antiquated.
We don't buy stuff for us for an antiquated computer.
No, 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 but what I'm saying to you right now is, we're only being billed right now for forty-nine.
Yeah, but that's not the bill I saw that got this, brought this to a head. We're trying, good for you, I made you cut it down about thirty computers, I'm liking it.
Right, that's what I'm saying, and that bill right now is thirteen thousand, two hundred and forty-one, that's still, that's still gold to us. But they give us a Senate bill, once we had the, when we had the security, when y'all, the system was hacked. It damaged our watch guard system, which we lost all our body cameras. So now we're paying Quong a four thousand dollar monthly bill just to store all of our body camera videos.
There's gotta be a better way.
There must be, yes, sir. So, but right now, that is all done prior to me. And, and right now, that's where we're at, we're stuck with that right now.
Listen, you can store stuff. I think part of the reason some of the stuff got hacked, you got this big old garage that you store stuff. Put it on there and then unplug it, where it can't, nobody hack it. You know what I'm saying? That, that was part of the problem, if not. There, there's multiple reasons for storing stuff anywhere else. And one of them is just so in case the sheriff's office burned out, you have a techy over here. But if you leave that cord plugged up, then they can get in there and hack it, so.
Right, that's why we, that's why we went out, like I said, when we come in, we went out for bids, and then like, the bird chief, we went out for bids for them. For them, they gave us corporate eighty-one computers. I can say, for them, their total cost for eighty-one was, uh, thirteen, basically the same price, thirteen thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars, but. They're calling, they're charging us. But they break it down, if we, they break it down to us. They break it down to us, I talked to them all, the thirty-nine computers, the thirty-nine, when we gave the bid, total would be nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars. If you go apples to apples. When you do, but the problem is their startup fee.
Let me explain our perspective. We didn't have a hundred and forty thousand in the budget just for computers. They went rogue and just signed a contractor some bucks, a contractor was not approved by the court. And they don't, and they expect us to figure out how to pay for it, I mean. You're assuming that we, the court intends to keep paying a hundred and forty thousand a year for computer techs and.
No, sir, I'm, I just did exactly what I was asked to do, which I did for all three. I was asked to get y'all the bids for all three.
Yes, sir, you was.
And I, and that's what I've done for you, so we can make a decision on how you wanna go forward. I just know that if we, if we don't use the security systems that we require, we will lose our NC dot CTCI capabilities to run. Uh, people, put them in jail, use the process that we need to use, because the state of Texas requires us to have the security that we are required to have.
When did they start that? We never had to have a contract for a hundred and forty thousand.
Well, you don't have to have that, you just have to have the security stuff. And apparently, prior to the incident, we got lucky. But once somebody found out that we didn't have the security protocols, they were able to get into our system and damage. We just don't have, we don't have that too much right now.
They're sitting up there in Istanbul like twenty-four hours a day trying to hack into people's stuff, and they, I don't get back ten dollars, I guess. Eight nine a year, the whole thing is that basically thieves are costing us thousands of dollars, making us have to spend this kind of money, but.
But the county can hire some. Some top-notch IT people, come in and run the whole county, that would be awesome too. But all I did was go out for bids for IT companies, I gave y'all all three of the bids, and I worked it down to where the finances are.
You say you went out for bids.
Yes.
And I remember the court approving, in other words, saying we're gonna go out for bid, you just went and got processes.
Well, I'm not.
There's something wrong with two hundred and fifty, do something, please. You don't have to bid that, right?
No, that's true.
What section of the code is that?
I don't remember it off, off, off of my head, but I do know that it's a professional services, we're, we're not a party.
I know that you don't bid lawyers and you don't bid engineers, I don't. But you're telling us that this falls into that.
Right, yes, sir. It's professionally managed IT services, so it's falling into that.
So let's go straight to it.
The three bids, basically, like I said, the birdies is local, it's in Humboldt, they offer us, what's really nice about them, and the other companies.
They're close.
They're here.
They're close.
They're instant, we can call them. If they can fix it online, they can show up. They're twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. That's what we like about it, especially with our dispatch system, which has to be operational twenty-four seven. That's, that's very delightful.
Which one are you talking about?
The birdie. That, that, that is the, the main thing. The problem is, is that it's the startup fee. The startup fee is with, with any company, they gotta come in.
Move their fees safely.
Yeah, the same way, that, that's the problem. Uh, because the, the fees are pretty much similar.
They ain't bringing any new computers, what are they bringing? Because what are they charging us to move that fee for?
What they, what they do is they, they bring in, yes, they do bring in new software, their software, and they cut out all the old stuff, when you use stuff. And they also stated that they would help us change out this watch guard problem of four thousand dollars a month. This is very expensive and it's gonna really eat our, eat our lunch monthly for four thousand dollars a month.
Watch guard, what is watch guard?
Watch guard is our body cameras and it's our video cameras. If we don't have this, we can't, we can't do our, our job.
Everybody needs body cameras, yeah. I agree with that. Everybody needs.
Yeah.
And we have to have.
Right.
It's not an option.
It's a statutory obligation.
Too much, too much.
Yes.
Ever taken, ever taken a county, if you're a Texas citizen.
That's become a qualification for how I, whether I take cases.
I agree. I agree with you. This day and age, you need to. Oh, yeah, I agree.
If it's not on video, we didn't have.
Right, and it protects the officer just as much as it protects the property.
So how much was that, were they gonna charge you on that four thousand?
On the birdie, he, well, they told me they would have to contact one and find out, who's one does it tell us? How much data they're actually using for what it's costing. You know what I'm saying? All they're doing is is how much they're charging us. They're not saying how much cloud space they're using or anything. So he said, they would have to actually contact me. They know, they know if worse than the worst, we could at least buy our own server. I know a four thousand dollars a month, we could buy our own server. And beat that.
Sure.
So right now, our server that we had before.
Is that what you're saying?
They said it's an option.
It's an option.
Wait a minute, I'm, I'm fixing to ask this thing. Can, can y'all hire or not take that? Wait a minute, I'm, I'm fixing to ask this thing, can, can y'all hire or not take that to do that thing?
We can't.
Okay.
We can, we can hire these people, I see.
We gotta, gotta, it needs to be, huh? We did. If he wants to wait it for, if he wants to take care of the sheriff's department, then the other guy will have time to do whatever he needs to do.
If we have somebody.
'Cause the sheriff's department takes a lot of his time.
Well, I can tell y'all, man, I can't somebody in there that is up to the standards of today's technology. And it's always changing, and having the software, and then, 'cause let me tell you what's gonna eat us, what eats us with their cost.
It's already.
It's the cost of the software that we use every day.
Licensees, per users, right?
The Microsoft, the, all this, everything we use costs money every month.
We're not gonna be able to hire nobody for the forty thousand we put in the budget, these guys, they, I think, well. Yeah, but at what point is, we're spending another thirty thousand dollars, I agree, at what point isn't it, that you know, I'd do it if I was somebody to take care of it. I, I, I agree with that, I mean. They're a little bit, they've already said what they're gonna do with that, and you wouldn't. My feeling is, uh, that, it's a brand new draft, so I'm just hoping I can get you out of your way with this.
Now, the other two, uh, the other two bids we got, one was out of Fort Worth, which to me was not even, they were higher, and they're out, they're, I don't know, they're too far. We had one out of Houston, which was actually higher, a little bit higher, but they also, they were dictating on their bill. They will dictate if they can, if they will send somebody to us. And so, they said they offer twenty-four hour service online, and they will dictate if, if we need somebody to come out and help us. And I said, no, that, thank you, but, thank you, but no. But, I still took their information, moved on. But, that is the companies that we discussed, I sent all copies to, on the deal, and like I said, it, it was just, we had two companies, we had Quantum, which we could sell it. And we had the Virgys, which is local in, computers twenty-four hours. What was the lower end?
Ninety-two hundred.
Yeah, ninety-two hundred, all on Facebook, and that's it at today's, right right now, because we're only at forty-five.
And you finished it with, are you, uh, if you have any ideas on?
Hiring IT personnel?
Yeah.
Uh, I can go that route if you'd like to, I didn't go that route, because I.
Well, he can't do it all, that's why the guy is this mess, I mean, he does whatever he has to do, but that's what he does, he kind of, uh, but he does work for us, and he's, I said, he's got a lot of knowledge, some of this stuff, he can spot out whether, are they hammering you on this or they're not, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and, and like I said, to me, Quantum, I saw that list, they also put in there, we don't want to cover laptops. And I was like, well, everything has to be covered, and, and then like, somebody wanted to not cover, not have Word, not have Microsoft Word, I have to have Microsoft Word, everything, because we have, we have, we have everything we use. In standard, it's not, you don't wanna let that to the office. In this county, I don't know, it's sort of forty miles, forty miles, don't wanna pay, we still be using it in the fall. Not to go back to the office all the time, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, that's, it makes our mission preferable, I mean, like, they, uh, take that one, they'll get anything done without.
So, fifteen thousand a month?
MDT, so not vertical data terminals, laptops in our cars, so, yeah.
The Virgys, y'all, if you look at that, at fifteen thousand at eighty-eight, which we're never gonna have eighty-eight. For the, for the, that, no, that was at eighty-one, we're never gonna have eighty-one, so. That's their maximum bid, okay? We're never gonna have that bid, I guarantee it.
That's a hundred and eighty thousand a year.
Well, like I said, I, I'd be happy with an IT guy, somebody that's smart enough that could get the software and having us working, I'd be happy with that, as long as we have the right equipment, and we can't get hacked, and we're stable.
Why are they charging us for Microsoft three sixty, I thought we already had?
But you have to pay for that software every, every year.
Everybody has their own user license fees, right, so per user, there are license fees for actually putting it on.
Twenty-three dollars. Everybody's in.
Every, every single user.
A user, yeah. Okay, every single user.
Yes, sir.
Eighty-seven, so how many deputies you got? I don't get, they gotta put proposals in there, but, are we, are we setting up every single jailer as a computer?
No, sir, no, sir, what you, what you, what you're doing is, you're setting up, 'cause every jailer did have a computer. The jail itself only has, I would say, six computers.
Who are these eighty people, who are these eighty people, I just.
Well, you have, you have almost, you're, you're gonna have thirty deputies, that's thirty laptops. Then you have, in the, uh, in the office, you have six, then you have detective six laptops plus six, uh, desktops. Then you got the administration, which has laptops.
So, one guy might have two or three computers.
That's crazy.
He's in his car, he's the laptop, all I want. Maybe they're, I don't know.
To me personally, the way to get away from that is if we buy the piece of laptops, and set it for top of the document section, where you don't have, where we don't have the desktops.
That's why I still have, I have.
Desktops we don't need, we really don't need, if we buy new in the future, we get rid of the desktops.
I like the way you think.
Get rid of the desktops and only go with, in the desk, the, uh, laptops where you can hear, take it out of the car, put it in the office, back and forth.
Other, other counties do that too, where they basically just take their laptop, if deputies like it, because they don't have to transfer to another, that side.
And, and, and that works out, right?
Twenty twenty-five, a lead managed service agreement with five servers and eighty-one users.
Yeah, they took that from, and all they did was, they took the Quantum information, and they gave us that, now they didn't give them that, you don't need.
I would have never given them the Quantum information, I would just tell them, look.
Well, we'd have to give them something.
I agree with you.
We have to give them something, we're by it.
Do, do you really expect they were gonna come in and pull over if you?
No, no, we didn't give them the numbers.
They didn't get the bid.
We gave them, we gave them.
The information. Okay. Yeah. They didn't give them the bid, that's why.
No, we gave them the numbers.
Yeah, he was thinking you have them to.
Well, you tell them what, what the.
Well, we went from, we didn't have a budget, though. Oh, I agree. To the hour target, we were even considering a hundred and fifty thousand a year. Wobble his level in behind him, how much he got.
Whatever y'all choose.
Take that money, but we're waiting, I don't, let them, 'cause he used to spend seventy-eight percent of his time at the jailhouse. That'd be the idea. Oh, I know. That'd be the idea. And, and then, the sheriff's department was always, if, if the DA's office had issues with.
Can I, can I tell you something else with another cluster that we have? I'm pretty sure that, with us, I gotta hack the department that has one email address, and the other half of the department has a different. Y'all know how confusing that is to try to send a, a, a change, like if I wanna send an email.
We changed emails about three years ago, and they refused to switch over.
That's what I'm saying, but every time.
But you had an option.
Quantum has their email, then you have the old email addresses, we, you know, I gotta tell everybody, I need to get everybody on the same email, but I can't change anybody to Quantum, because it's twenty-three dollars a head.
Do you think you could hire, uh, somebody that you and the DA told the money that we have budgeted?
I mean.
Where's this money, you tell me? What are you budgeting for that, do I take that? About, is that eleven dollars? Is that correct? Forty-five thousand, that's, that's why they ain't been able to hire nobody. Well, my ass think they could, for that.
Not for forty-five thousand?
Probably not.
But if he combines what we, what we had, what we see and what we have in the spirit, if you put something together, he probably could.
Right, I mean, it's, if, if they go down, we go down, we're taking it, you know?
How much are y'all paying, you, how are you paying for yours?
I paid for mine on all that passive work, 'cause there's no cost.
How much are you paying?
Uh, I believe I pay, I pay Quantum, and I can't remember how much I paid off, top joke, but it's the same rate, it's just for six users.
How much? It's for six users?
Yeah. It's, it's six users at the same rate, I think it's what, one twenty-five a user, something like that, so six users?
Seven hundred and fifty dollars a month.
Yes, sir.
Six.
So, that's why the county alone, if we, I mean, if we get a real IT department for the whole county, and have maybe five eyes through the whole county.
You're paying a hundred and twenty-five a user. Eighty into thirteen thousand is way more than that.
There's, they're also doing managed IT, also software licenses and stuff like that through to it, so, I mean, I believe it comes around with the, with the other software licenses and stuff like that that I have, for all of my users, I think it probably, it's around eleven hundred, twelve hundred bucks a month. For all, for twenty-four seven IT, now, I.
That, that kinda adds, it gets back up to where the numbers.
That's, I, I, it's, I'm not surprised by that bit, right, because that's, that's pretty similar to what I'm doing. But, I tell you, the longest outage I've had since I've had them has been about an hour, for anything.
And they're good, it's just like I said, no, if we, if they can't get something for us right now, we have to wait a day or two, because they gotta come from out of town, because they're coming from.
Yeah.
Wakeville or something, you know what I mean, they're not local. That was the only thing about the Virgys, because they are local, we could use them right now, now.
Why would they need to come up here if, if it's hard? I, I can, I know some of the problems that they have, that he walks into the office and his life, and, oh, he needs to push his butt. Right, well, some of them are, well, have really big deals, we, we don't have the most experience. I'm one of them, hey, I didn't make this thing come home here, that you need to push it, but.
But, it, Judge, I can get some idea of the complexity, if there are three deputies that arrive on the scene, and they're out there for about an hour, that's probably almost a terabyte right there of video footage. Not, no reports, no pictures, nothing else. And all that has to be packaged, downloaded, then transmitted to my office, then distributed to the defense attorney, so it is, it is complicated process. The more, the more complicated that is being kept and transferred, the more expensive it's gonna be to hand it over.
Drop it on to a CD and hand it to them.
We did, Judge, and that rarely gets carried on.
And it has to, we have to maintain everything, depending on the case, for different periods of time. Everything has to go for ninety days, one eighty days, three years.
Because when you're burning, uh, you, when you, I'd be burning twenty-three, uh, different videos to bring them all over to the DA's office, and then you copy them, and then there may be some mistakes. So, there has to be a course, so our defense attorney can say, hey, this, this, this CD just went, or defense attorneys would lose the CDs, and then ask me about it three or four times. So, just having it be able to transmit it digitally, and I can prove that I transmitted, Chief Dog can pr- prove that this deputy has transmitted to me everything that's in there.
I can prove you transmitted that CD that the lawyer lost, that's on the lawyer.
Well, that would be good, Judge, but you, you know.
I picked it up, each side of the little form, I picked it up.
I, I agree with you, but if we're trying a case and they say, oh, yeah, I just lost it, you know, I mean, I, I don't wanna make it.
I hope he's got a malpractice insurance.
I, I agree with you, but I'm just trying to make sure that they get everything that I have, so I can try a case.
Just that way, just that way, working on that next IT department ourselves, in-house, is, is the best way to go, I mean. The problem is, we, we didn't put enough blood money in there in Harrison, but we didn't think nothing about spending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a company that don't even have a contract with us.
But, precinct, they pay.
Anyway, see, I'm not taking it out on you, I'm just saying.
Cause we're paying IT in precinct three also, we can land there with all of those parts of the city on.
Just looking down the road, just looking down the road, right now, we may have to have a debate or something to get these guys going, but we need somebody on. I don't know why, it seems like it's more palatable. Yeah, well, that's a company, go ahead and pay them a hundred and fifty, but if it falls up, and you're talking about hiring two of them. Yeah, but they're paying them sixty-five thousand dollars, that's what, that's gonna take. At least that. I agree, I agree with you, but I don't think you should at least that, but I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna, we're gonna have to get a house. Well, we went through this, this vicious cycle years ago, and that's how we ended up. Ten years ago, we hired a guy of our own, and it worked out great, but we got so big, we've outgrown him. He needs, he needs some more help, and we put a little money in there for that, but not, not enough. Well, he's had some health issues up and down, that knocked him out from being a, she had talked to him a couple times, and, and he lied, lied a couple times, but I mean. It's a health issue she's battling with.
Not enough, I, I, I'm getting the problem, I, I just realized this capability isn't what I required, so we're gonna get.
We're still waiting since we spent software in precinct three.
So, how much money do you think it would take to hire someone?
We're still waiting on IT out of precinct three, is Judge Ellis or D. I think we've been waiting for a month or two.
What do y'all think it would take to hire someone?
I would say it probably loaded rate's gonna be around seventy-five, right, probably. And I'm just being honest, anything that, because, I mean, like, we don't have a lot of guys or IT guys, so we're after.
This, this service agreement, that's basically, that's, that's to get, what you get for that is somebody with them, anytime any one of them eighty-one computers goes out, they, they fix it, they get it back going, I guess. Right, is that all it is?
And they make sure all the so, they make sure all the software's up to date, they make sure our security's up to date, they make sure that we, 'cause everybody in the county is supposed to really have safety, uh, training. Everybody's supposed to go online.
Make sure each one of their people has, has.
But that, but that, the, the IT guy sends that out to everyone, and he makes sure it's done, 'cause he'll send us the email, saying, hey, look, this person, this person, this person had to finish their training, to make sure all the trainings.
He, he'd be a schedule, but the department had to keep up with their own.
Right, but I'm, I'm just saying, IT guy runs.
So, when the IT guy calls and says, hey, man, Deputy Jones, you didn't take the, now, you're in more, the sheriff tells him to take it, your report, what I'm trying to do.
Right, it all comes back to me, my deal is that, I don't have any real light at the phone calls, but my deal is that we need somebody there to be over IT.
But, cause I don't remember it.
I rates.
Even at seventy-five, that doesn't pay for all the software and all that other stuff, and we're getting somebody to work on it, there's another part of it too. They, they got software for the most part, it's already in everybody, but I'm, we're already paying a bunch of money for software.
But, but.
It's not, it's not.
That's included in their packet, you're still paying for those licenses.
Kind of like them other softwares they got, whatever they got, I don't know, you got Justice Solution, or whatever they're called, I don't know.
No, we still had Stilman, we had competitive, but.
Sure, right, that's what I'm saying. Right, we're already, that's already in the business.
Yeah.
Right, but, but what you're talking about is, you still have to pay for all those licenses that you're still requiring.
Microsoft, those type things.
That's included in this.
He's storing all the data and all that, to make sure that, we save everything, but the IT guy, and IT guy, now he's everything.
We have an IT guy, he may be able to, like I said, that, that, he may be able to, got a certain direction where we can buy our own server, save our own data, so we're not paying all that money for a server. Cause we don't really need that, that's a lot of money, monthly, just to hold our videos, to me, that is a lot.
It's a lot, with all the soft, the software, all that stuff. Well, is there something they could do? There's something they could do about some of this.
Well, when you have a company, I, I don't know how big Quantum is, when you have a company like that.
Well, when you have a company, I, I don't know how big Quantum is, when you have a company like that, that's doing it in a lot of places, they have a big knowledge base, and they, they tend to know how to do it better, sometimes, you understand? Because it's not a single person out here doing IT for a county. It, you, it's, there's people behind the people that answer the phone.
They got bigger networks of people.
Right, and then, this day and time, there's a lot of, you know, oh, you know, the hackers are in there, and they're working on such and such, and you need such and such patch from Microsoft for Windows, blah, blah, blah. There's a big, they have a big knowledge base, and, and that's the advantage of going with a company versus going and doing, trying to do it in-house.
And they already know the truth, the truth, what's going on.
Based on my experience with Quantum, they're probably.
I, I, Quantum, I don't even wanna hear that word.
Okay, okay.
Talk about this guy.
Okay.
He's trying to switch. They left the sour paste and, and, yeah. How big a firm is the Burge's?
I'm gonna say they're like fourteen, thirteen, uh.
I used to work for EDS, which turned into HP, and EDS was the largest consulting company in the world at the time. And, you know, we had tremendous knowledge bases of all kinds of different things, but it's hard to do now.
I'd rather go with a mid-level, you saw the one that's the biggest one in the world, this just poof.
Yeah.
No, this is a mid-level.
Close.
And it's in the middle of, in the middle of, it's downtown.
And the price comparison.
The price comparison is similar to Quantum, but what I like about it is that they're when I call them, I'm talking to somebody I know, somebody I can see, not somebody I've talked to yet. And I know that they will come to us.
We're dealing with that a little bit with Quantum.
Your quantum is great, when you call them, and then they'll send them down in a couple days, but like, we had a new computer from the back of the office in front, and we had to wait two days, or actually, it was a weather, but then wait for them to come up to move them from here, because there's still what they have to do to move that account, and we didn't do it, you know? I could move it, but when I got done with it, it may not work the way it works before. We made your home.
I just think the biggest problem that we have with it is they're, they did this without our approval. I think that was a.
Well, the law says you gotta get proof.
Yeah, we're paying something, no offense to.
If it's over fifty thousand, it is.
Well, last year probably a hundred and fifty, by the time we had everything up. So, I guess, like, what do they wanna do, do they want us to approve this new contract?
And I appreciate you bringing it to the court and getting free bids and all the work you put on.
Yeah, I guess.
Cause we either gotta keep going with the other, or.
Change up.
Change up.
I like the idea that, I like the idea that they're a little cheaper, I guess we could say.
And we can keep, and we can keep accurate numbers, if we start off, when we start off on day one, cause this, this all happened, like I said, part of me coming on, I can keep accurate numbers, exactly who's got what, who's got when, and what number.
Contract, so quantum contract, is it like something we're liable to, you know?
It's a void contract, you guys, it was a, yeah, it's a void contract. I, I don't foresee any issues.
One time, sir, the twenty-nine thousand dollars. What exactly are you gonna say, I asked you how it was in there?
Yeah.
Rogue stars going on that, I don't know. We hadn't spent a dime about anything, but I doubt whoever did it had nickels.
Why would you say that, Frank? You're curious.
I'm surprised we got it the first time.
You're, you're shit in the breeze from your job.
You're not. I always thought we were gonna get, we wouldn't have went and spent a half million on cars, because of the money. Could've put that on, down the road.
That's a contract that you signed here. We all stick to what I'm doing.
We're done coming up with these guys, you just got online, and I'm just curious, I wouldn't even know where to look for that.
I imagine they.
I will tell you, I will tell you, uh, most of y'all, I've met my wife, and, uh, she, she went online and she went online and got all of this info.
So you're taking it glory.
Yeah, I ain't gonna lie.
So the one that says bits, they're out of, they're twelve thousand, thirteen thousand.
Yes, but they are not local, let's see bits. Their total is thirteen thousand four hundred.
Right.
And, uh, they're the ones that, uh, they're the ones that decide if, uh, they wanna send their persons to come help us or not, they're the ones that make decisions on us, on their, on their budgets, and I'm like, you don't like that shit.
Another bunch is for the public's knowledge for sixteen thousand.
Yeah, that was, uh, the one out of Waco, sixteen thousand.
And that's why I said the policy wasn't, cause they had a policy, and you look at all the associated.
Yes, sir. And now, now, it's like I said, about a hundred, a hundred fifty bucks. Yeah, when you start adding all the licenses and everything, but.
It's pretty standard across the board, we started looking at it here, yeah, but not a lot of difference in sentences or phrases.
Cement.
I haven't talked to, lately, the guy was in our office, and I talked to him, and I asked him about the server deal, he said, did that get back with you? He didn't know, and I never heard nothing.
They say, prove it, it comes down to it. So they already had set up their, yeah.
Well, they, that's what I'm saying, the other guy, he had that startup, cause he said, there's people in there, they've got way into, uh, our electronic. It's amazing, even one of them, nobody even knew it. There's stuff that's in there. And they were doing the oops.
I agree, I agree with what you said.
I'm like, you moved the oops stuff that's in there.
If we stayed in town, we wouldn't have to pay that startup.
We got no, uh, we got no proposed contract or offer for Quantum.
If we use Quantum, we wouldn't have to pay as startups again, that's a lot of money, too.
Yeah, they'd say just about fifteen, fifteen thousand bucks.
So, did you ever run a call to it one time?
Nope, I'm just making sure, I, they've been, they've been jammed up for me and everybody.
I thought you had one issue with them, too.
No, sir, I've been very happy with them, uh, sorry, we, we haven't had, like you said, the longest downtown we've had, it's been about an hour. I mean, like, they've been pretty good, now, I will say there's a difference between our system and Sheriff's Office. They have a lot more physical hardware that require people actually come and actually work on it, ours, pretty much everything you can do remotely, right? Every, everything that you can do on our, our systems, they usually come in, do the remote desktop, get us fixed up, we're back and running again. So, but with the Sheriff's Office, I get what Chief is saying, that's a fair consideration, they have a lot more physical hardware, right? They gotta have a server to do all this stuff. Uh, we, we went a different route with ours, then again, we're not dealing the same thing, day in, day out, Sheriff's Office is dealing.
Where are they serving, where are you saying, where are they saving all this stuff, it must've been on our own servers, or?
Otherwise, well, they're not there.
My understanding was a lot more fault detective when we got hacked, some of our servers were damaged, that's why we had uh, Martin taking care of our, our campus system now.
They were damaged. Understanding was, we got hacked because there was some, there was three people that had old emails that was still outstanding.
Right.
And they used that email.
I had no idea.
Yeah, there was, there was three, there were then two, there were different old email accounts.
There were two?
Yes, sir.
Two of them were, one guy, he worked here in ten years, and another guy, I don't know if he uses it, or and then there was a generic VPS email, which was, I was told.
Those are the user names that he used to access, yes, you're right.
So that's the second hack, that's the one that happened in October, that was the first hack.
That was, yeah, the, the second one was the one with the, with, at the Treger's office, but that was the one, and that was why we hacked all of the employees.
That was in October.
Yes, sir, so the other one, now, I mean, it wasn't necessarily through emails, it was logins, right? Like, cause there's nothing that necessarily through email you can hack in, what they use, they use a login, which is an email, and then they.
The first thing they did was send us a bunch of emails, I'm surprised I got my stuff, yeah.
It, it could be.
Now sending you an email, we got hacked.
It, it could be, but it's kinda seemed like they were.
My stuff's gone.
It seemed like there were two different thread backers, like on, on, uh, so I, I don't know if it was, I don't know if it's related, I don't know, but. Yeah, so, if.
Do we have a different clock?
Yes, like I said, it is from forty-nine. And, uh, at forty-nine, there have been this thirteen thousand.
So did they change that number on your request when you called, to forty-nine, cause they were good, unless it was like eighty-seven?
No, it says, it says up to.
It says forty-one on what I see.
Yeah, forty-one, I'm sorry, forty-one.
Did they change that when you started talking to them?
No, cause it says, up to seventy-seven, computers, non-servers, at a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month, it could've been up to one month, one monthly server.
So is that bill supposed to be seventy-seven? That's what you said.
No, up to.
Up to, but right now, they're only charging us forty-one.
Or does it face somebody else?
Yeah, same does, and, and what I'm afraid of is if we go up.
Any contract that can be undone after a year, every year, we pass a budget, and it's refunded.
So where's the money off your safety then? Where's the money off your job?
Well, we've been paying, uh, outside of Biden.
It was being paid out of contract services and.
It was.
Well, there's no, there's no big line out of big computers guy, hundred and something thousand a month, we'd have to keep paying it out of whatever we were paid, and, uh.
I would say with all the papers, too, you got a contract.
Right.
It is, but it was being paid out of contract services and.
Have they sent you a contract?
It was.
Yeah, but, and you know, it's not that I ran a flag with personal against them, but we just don't have a contract, I'm one.
No, I just have.
For two months, man.
I just have a paper.
Forty-two months, man.
I have two bills from them. That's all I got from them.
So, I guess that, that, uh, three, Microsoft Office, that's twenty-three dollars, no matter who you buy.
Yes.
Bill Gates, he got the. Oh, it does say forty-nine down here, you're right, on the, on the numbers, monthly users.
Yes, sir, that's on the dual multi-factor authentication, which we should have that for every computer, yeah. No computer should not, no, every computer should have dual, dual authentication.
Yeah, every, every one of my.
The only ones I think are having is once they're going on the internet.
So, every computer, every computer can.
Do they, do they hook it up?
You have to have.
They, they could work and not be hooked to the internet.
Yeah, but they, they have to transmit that, the lateral reports and stuff like that, so that user part will be.
There, so, all I'm saying is, I don't know, none of them should be sitting up there watching YouTube and all that other stuff.
I agree, did they get rid of that?
Some of them do.
It's not, it, it's, the internet is not for the access for YouTube, it's for processing all the.
Yeah, that's my.
Software, that is in the computers, you gotta have internet.
What's that point like? Technology's caught up to us.
Maybe if you quit, if it takes sixty-five thousand, what is it, across the hiring, right?
Depends on what level you want, I mean.
I know a man that works for both counties, what did it take to get him over here?
My son has a degree in cybersecurity, and he makes a hundred and fifty. My son has a degree in cybersecurity, he makes a hundred and fifty thousand dollar a year.
Well, sixty-five, we oughta be able to hire.
It's called, it's seventy-one now.
But that's just, that's just salary, that's not, that's not a hard number, they probably pay it closer to.
And he should work for seventy-five.
That's what we said, what we said.
Probably eighty to a hundred thousand.
So, so, does that, does that, there's a forty thousand in there? Judge, we need that.
Contract services.
We shouldn't put you in.
I don't, we didn't have any telling us that we, if you're professional services, you don't have to bid that. I'm not sure about that, but I'm gonna be proud of it, I'm gonna say, that's what he said. So that's really what works, a lot of it is. That's mentioned earlier. Those theater guys probably aren't very way into that classification, but we used to always bid, so it's like, there's a, uh.
We're at point five now, we need an IT person. We need to work at point five. Till that point, we need some place to take care of these guys.
So, look here. Here is a hundred and five thousand dollars in the combined contract services, that would look like it's for retention and sure. I, I, I realize. There's another one we can hire, an IT guy, I realize that's not all the contracted services do, but that's where the point is gonna go. For this right here. We got none, just need to hire somebody to do what y'all need to do.
It would have been a long one.
At what salary? Sixty-five.
That's not making, no, I don't.
I hate, I hate.
I agree, I agree with your fix, sir.
The other guy is making a list, yeah.
I agree with your fix, sir.
I agree with your face side.
Thirty years, it's great. Well, we got, we got one, one of five, the contracted services, then we got forty-five, and second, I think, that we both know. So, we've got money to hire somebody. If we can get someone to do it, we need that.
And the other, ah, 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 two guys, the worst they can be is, I don't know, man, I'm just throwing stuff out there. It sticks, it sticks, but never, now, both counties got a couple of guys working there, so I got two or three guys.
One of them, we, we know, he makes about sixty-five. Well, that's, we know that's... No, he don't make that, he makes fifty, but...
That's what I want, it's sixty-five. About eight eleven. That's just, that's, because we did, but that's... You're like, my kids, some, that cybersecurity and all that, you can see what we got, if we get some of that, we, we get some... Can we table this, and that's all come to, I think our best thing is, and I, I like everybody else, I think our best one is to hire someone, I think. To get us set up for the future too. A few years from now, that must be it.
Okay, we still have these outstanding bills, huh?
They got, they had to present, they don't have a legal contract, they had to present us a contract.
Okay, well, just make sure everybody knows.
I know it's too much, but I don't have one of them. Now, is that the one that's in your job?
Sure, there's got to be four.
They didn't pay them up until we put the brakes on.
They're not being extended this year.
I can hear it. You think the only thing to do is your...
So, there's November, so we don't need them this January.
Sheriff. Me and Martin, we, 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 because of the weather. I figured you know this business, somebody that needs water. Thank you, y'all.
What if, what if we, that's twenty thousand dollars, you know, right there.
I agree. What if we went there?
I'm just asking to, you know, check the law, try to get, the old commissioner's right, we, we, we need to drag them.
We gotta pay that one, we gotta pay it.
Well, that one's out, and moving forward, you know, we talked about hiring somebody table this, but if we can't, that table, apparently, these guys need to be up in the...
I agree.
So, what's... If we table it, that means, I guess, we're saying we're just gonna keep going with the intent of trying to hire an IT guy, even if we gotta put more money in.
There you go.
I think we need to have a conversation.
With Sheriff G.
Y'all really going?
What's best for y'all?
Yeah, figure out. I, I just don't think we had that, so we... You come here and...
I'll be out. Me and Martin may touch that later.
So, do y'all think it would be better to give us, I want them, or I think... Yeah, that is, which way y'all...
To me, is, if we hired the right personnel, that is knowledgeable on the, on the street side, that's one. Because then we control it. As long as we hire, not Joe, not, not somebody's buddy, that's just, can work on computers. I'm gonna hire a legit person that has...
We're all, we're all related, actually, we can evolve it too.
Yes, and then, then, if we that, that'd be great. If not, we need to go with a company that has the background, has this, has all the knowledge, so they can protect us. Because the number of things is protection. That's what we're basically paying. We're protecting the county.
Do you know anybody from the Henry County?
I know a lot of people from the Henry County.
Or this type of...
Yes, but I definitely can afford trying them away from Henry County.
That's where the problem is getting, paying the money first to help them out.
Now, I, I mean, I can, I mean, y'all come up with a number, and I know people, I can call them, ask if they're willing to switch. You know.
Yeah.
Buddy, I would be extremely qualified, yeah, we like to do that.
I mean, I mean, all the IT guys over there, I love, I mean, I'm gonna take great years.
And they're familiar with...
Their IT department is awesome.
I'm a player.
That would be, they get, they get millions of dollars every year, taxes, that would be awesome.
Well, but it's a self-contained unit, and they got, like, ten people.
You're talking about one person, you're still gonna have the same thing, this person is gonna be on all, he's gonna be...
Well, for a hundred...
We got one guy.
They were talking about a hundred and sixty-five, wouldn't you say a hundred and sixty-five is what y'all were saying? For a hundred and sixty-five, we actually have two people.
That's a ton, we already got one, and we, he's making less than that, I don't know how we keep a guy, we didn't make him at least the same.
But, we'll figure it out.
Because if we can bring that, the guy that's here now, up to par, and get everybody on the same, like I said, we need everybody on the same...
You know, this would be awesome too. Mr. Joe, is that good to ask? Can he come over and give us a tour of what we need to do? Has, has anyone talked to him? We're talking about our IT guy, my brother.
I, I've been, I've been talking to him about that.
I know, you got a couple of tops. Yeah, but I'm saying about going over there and getting him with his feet.
He, no, no, we gotta see his health issues right now, he's been having some tough, tough things, and he's been in health.
They gone through some stuff.
Yeah.
So...
He can see what his land is. I don't think they put him on one, I can get.
And he showed... I would assume that he would know a little track, somebody about, some, some service, that we need to protect, he's a computer person.
Yeah.
He can go to a company and get this program, it needs to be able to be, we don't, I don't know, I don't know. Does any of them know?
They know.
No.
He knows.
You're right, you're right. I can, we'll leave it about that, I mean, ask him to go over there, figure out what y'all need, and have a plan.
Yeah, but see, okay, as long as, you know, I, I'm, I'm happy to talk to anybody about anything, as long as he would know, you know, like I said, you know, how big a system we would need, how much, how much data we would need.
Do you know?
No, that's what I'm saying, when we show him, when we show him our stuff.
He should know, he should, yeah, he knows.
He, I mean, he retired from TDC, did this, GDC, he's here, and he's done it for us, that's what, what we hired, about twelve or something. Twenty-eight years. Uh, it's just got more than he can handle, plus, I know he used to spend, I'm telling you, seventy percent of his time to tell us.
That's, that's true.
That ain't no, we're not wrong.
I think he didn't build one in October there, in the last few years.
Communication was an issue, we don't have that over here now, we don't have no problem with TDK. So, we need, he needs to go over there and figure out whether...
That's our best case.
I agree, I agree.
Can you get a little more, take something, don't you?
Sure.
Get your job in, and figure it out, sure.
So, make a plan, bring me back to us. What about the bill, though?
We're on, fuck it, we gotta pay it.
So, we just stay with quantum until we figure out...
There you go, that's my, that's my plan.
Until we find out what we're saying, I think, once, once you get someone like Martin to look at it, and they maybe sell us some stuff, we don't...
I agree.
Well, I'm sorry, I've had that, but I think that's, thank you, Ron. And everybody there was, what are you gonna listen to?
Because we gotta pay the bill.
Yeah, I remember, I get that. We kicked up in this bill, gone by ourselves in the lawsuit.
All right.
It's probably, it's probably need to approve the contract.
Well, I mean, we're not actually approving a contract right now, because like you said, we have the issues with the contract, but I would say let's, this isn't, like, we could just, we can't shut that off and not have those services. So, I'm, I'm not saying we approve a contract, anything with a contract, we say, continue, situation is, that would be our recommendations. Situation is normal until we find the...
And without contract, we can terminate, and anytime, we hire a new guy, we can say, hey, thank you so much, it's been a pleasure.
Correct. Do you need to vote on that?
Yes, because the invoice is mentioned in the, in the...
I'll, I'll make a motion, you pay the invoices to pass.
I have a motion by Commissioner Morris, second by Commissioner Nattuno. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, aye, say a two, nine, five, zero. So, we're gonna raise a plan.
We're talking about, yeah, yeah. Like, we're gonna, he's shot, yeah. His future is.
What? At some point, if you can hire a guy and get his goals, hire another guy, give him setup, and then hit this, it's not gonna last, it might take much longer, and then, something that jack is there, when they see him, they're arguing. Out of number twenty-one, consideration discussion impossible vote, out pending sheriff or committee. Yes, sir.
I'm back.
You're back.
I didn't, I didn't check in the...
All right, our three, our three bids that we got, and our five vehicles that are coming at the end of April. Okay?
Six vehicles.
Yeah, six, it's a six.
Three and six.
Three and...
Yeah, I'm sorry, six, I'm sorry, six vehicles. Okay, we have a, from byboard, from Dana's Safety Supply. The, uh, bill comes out, we got that, submitted to G R, and made here, so the three cars right now, our bill is, uh, sixteen, zero, three, seven, seventy-seven, outfit outfit cards.
That is a little more than we had anticipated going on.
Oh, that's...
Okay, but these cars come with cameras, radar?
These cars do not come with cameras.
Wow, well, is what you're outfitting them with include cameras?
No, sir. These cars do not come with cameras, because cameras have not been, uh, approved. Uh, this car does come with all the lighting, all the, uh, equipment for internal, for the console, the cage, the security stuff for the prisoners, a lock box in the back, equipment for all the sirens, stuff, for trade from the back, for all the safety equipment.
Right, of course.
All the lights and everything. Everything is included, radar's included. Everything, everything except for the cameras and...
We need a radar.
Radar. So, I, so we can, uh, stop speeder, sir. I was informed, and we need to get out there, what's some traffic? And with our new cars, they're all gonna come with brand new, uh...
You're the one who needs to work the traffic?
Yeah, we need to rush the track. You can get out there. You want to do deterrence.
They got the GPS, they got... Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
You want a radar?
We got, are these radios?
No, sir.
What is that? Eighteen hundred dollars, seventy piece, three, custom Eagle III dual K A band, that ain't...
That is any radar, sir.
Radar.
That is, sir. You gotta have radars.
They changed the number of radios. Yeah, I, I, I see, I didn't know, it didn't say radar, I'll say, oh, she got there, whatever, she's out, what's the numbers? Right.
You say, oh, you almost got right over, you do get it, oh.
Oh, yeah. This is the byboard, uh, card, bid, the byboard contract is, uh, six eight, I mean, six nine eight, has two three.
I don't know what you said, did?
Wait, what do you, byboard bid, so?
Yeah, byboard, byboard contract, like you told me.
From, it's, uh, byboard. You found this, this package, second thing, this package bid on byboard?
Yes, sir. Footage, you got the footages.
I'm sure, but I'm looking at it.
Does it say byboard? So, is this, you're gonna, you're only gonna have the six cars that you've done out, but you said it'll be ready to go once it comes in.
We're not coming in till...
My...
Okay.
I agree.
Some of them are...
I agree.
My counsel is...
Next one.
Mid that one, mid that one? You like, you like...
My...
You don't have it, buddy?
It was better when White Richon was, I think, in that gym. It was...
So, I got my standard shit, yeah, my bridge.
Yes, yes.
I mean, this is...
Didn't get electric twins. Pretty cheap now.
That's what y'all want, that's what y'all want to get, I mean, that's what this is for.
This, I, I looked at the bid, it's pretty, it's...
Oh, yes.
You know, this is, this is... This is actually more good, that's what it costs. Same amount.
Sure. I talked to...
I, I got that one, sir.
We talking about Dana's Safety?
The public, the public was made a comment, but it's why they bought electric cars, I'm not sure. You think, you think they go down, they just don't have byboard? I'm really glad. I'm really glad they go, I like it.
Well, I mean, you see, uh...
I'm really glad they go, I like it.
Well, I mean, you see, uh...
Take your shot.
It's big, right? It doesn't have to be the byboard, there's others. Go on. It's enough. I did it, guys.
I made a motion that we...
Oh, do you see where it said byboard?
You hit them with this one. I got it on my computer.
I thought I was taking a byboard.
This is a package with about forty things, it's hard, was it on byboard?
You tell the byboard, sir. Byboard numbers on that, prepare.
You see it, Mr. Martin? It's just, it's very odd that they have a package that just meets the... I'll make a motion, depending if it's on byboard or not. Paper was sent to the twenty to drive, is what we, which, which we...
Again, with.
Uh, by, by, by our byboard caller, with our money, and we go, our bill was sent to the...
That's right.
Which you had submitted, yeah, yeah, to byboard. Have we bought, have we spent any of the sent bill?
No.
Not the biggest shares.
Good, that's outstanding.
So, is that...
Well, there is a proposal here, it says by, by, byboard contract number six ninety-eight twenty-three.
Good job.
What was that, tell them we can...
Two seventy.
So, it was seven, one thirteen, and same...
Two oh seven, one thirteen, and same share.
Double share?
No. So, it's just going to send it on...
Just tell you. They don't have this, with my, I said, they're not, I said, they're not, I said, they're not byboard.
Six nine four.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And this, the whole bill of having on the air, and having on the... Since I know they're covering this April?
It's a shit trailer.
Well, that is, it's actually, it's giving me...
That way you stand up for it.
To get that, so everybody can read it and all that stuff, of course, it's, of course, and, he says, it's a ten week delivery, get number one, so that way it can go in and get it. Then, so, from the bottom, so...
So, we expect, we'll send the old caller, our, our, where we put them up, socks down, and sold.
Oh, yeah.
Please.
Yeah, because I got to take care of the radio.
Yeah, we're trying to, the maintenance is killing us. Done. Done.
It's on the phone, sir. It's on the phone, sir.
Sorry. You got it, Tommy. So who, who made the move?
I did, Mark said.
I have a motion by Commissioner Mars, a second by Commissioner Natuno, to approve the Dana Safety Supply Inc. Contract to outfit all these cars as. Byboard contract number six nine eight two three. Any questions? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? I say it is two down minus five zero. So what that must mean is they're big time into selling all kinds of parts for. It's outfit police and the state has approved all these different items. Must be what it is.
Yes, sir, that company, that company supplies D P S, Harris County, Montgomery County.
For the record, it's being paid for with S D twenty-two money.
It's two hundred and seven thousand and fifty.
And so the three cars that we have now, they're, they're gonna be different, different color. So how do you outfit those?
It's all gonna be the same, uh, they're just, one, uh, two of them are different colors, one's black. So, but they're all, it's just gonna be.
I thought one was a green color. That's what we said.
And one's black and two are gray.
Two, two. So how do you?
Well, the gray, the gray, the gray, the gray gets, the gray gets, the gray gets black shots.
That was twenty. They aren't gonna be, they're not gonna.
No, there's nothing, nothing.
All the extra stuff, yeah. Out of number twenty-two, consideration discussion, possible vote approved. Come a member with tips, purchasing co-op, approving an interlocal agreement and relevant. We have interlocal with various purchasing entities. This is just another one that's out there.
Yes, sir, I look at the door for more things, uh, more, we're looking for outfitters and for our cars and things. Uh, tits comes up on the lot and it, it just, and we don't have a, um.
Texas public entity or what?
Yeah, we don't, we don't have. There's no fee involved. You just have to have a free contract and the resolution has to be done by the board.
Do they give a rebate back?
Everything's in the contract and I don't.
One time in twenty years, we got a rebate. Oh, we did all the time.
I tried to include as much information as possible with an important.
I make the motion. I have a motion by Commissioner Natuno, second by Commissioner Mars. Any questions? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? I say it is two down minus five to zero effective, I guess, we today.
We can pass it down.
Sorry, that time, they don't copy something. On that very spread of the chart.
For the necking.
You don't believe in them?
No, they just, you just got, you just got it.
You got a match, you got a band card.
There's four.
In January twenty-second.
We're not studying.
She gets reports? Fritz? No. True. But have point, getting them thing in there. Regionated Education Center. Resolution.
Why you be looking at this? Put your head on this. Is that coming?
Okay, the interlocal.
That's, that's easy to say, just make. Just email. You also reports too, just email them to me. You do that? All your reports, can you just email them to me?
Is she on, is she, she just emailed them to this baby?
Yeah.
I will make sure that she.
Yeah. But just email all the box stuff to her, 'cause. I don't know what they say, I could sell my computers, go through, she kind of set her. Yeah, she filters it, you know.
So you're saying since it's that?
Yeah.
Okay, she did.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, I know, she did.
Oh, yeah. Trying to finish signing the papers on. Twenty-two, and then we can move to another. Out of number twenty-three, consideration discussion and possible vote to approve service order and agreement for a new phone system with East Texas Telephone Co-op. For the auditor, J P one, tax assessor, sheriff's department, and adult probation department. So only question I have, there's enough money within the votes to take it.
If you're all for that, I'm.
So I get motion.
I didn't hear, sorry.
There's enough money these one live to take care of what you're doing.
Now, a motion by Commissioner Natuno. Second by Commissioner Domini. Any questions? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? I say it is two down minus five to zero. So, is that all in there?
Yes, sir.
Transfer to treasure, transfer.
Yes, sir, you have, this is saving a lot of money.
Good deal. Appreciate that. Theoretically, if we all get on, you're able to push a button and transfer. You'd have to have a list of who, I don't even know the transfers from a secretary. But you don't know the code. You gotta have, you gotta know the number.
I'm all right. I think so, I'm all right.
Yes.
Hey, come in here.
You're showing a little bit of attitude.
Out of number twenty-four, consideration discussion, possible vote approved. Send the city county rules and regulations to show minimum lot size.
See, I got, I got a quick question. I don't think that all the subdivisions that are already here, rather than.
Right.
Okay, okay, okay. That's what I was hoping, I'm sure.
So. It's not necessarily stated in our subdivision rules and regulations that there has to be a minimum lot size. Um, I know that the newest subdivision that have come through have all been over.
Over acres. Over acres.
Over an acre. So, uh, the only place that it's stated basically is in the septic rules, so with T C E Q, the minimum lot size requirement, which is half an acre if you have public water, and that's made in that for a separate system, and one acre if.
You got what?
Water to drill a well.
Well, so what do you all think, Mr. Wood? Christian, what do you all think, Mr. Wood?
Why do you need a minimum?
Over an acre, I agree. Well, I mean, the requirements, you say. Not if you're talking about how much. They just have to put in a sewer system that will.
Commodate.
Commodate. No, because you, you, uh. We're trying to put off cookie cutter thing where we make everybody the same.
And that's what I'm saying, it, it's covered, it's, it's. If you have public sewer, water, it's got quarter acre lots. Why? Because you got public sewer, like, with public water.
They don't need, so it's, it's gonna have to deal with. If they have public sewer, they have public water.
I think they want the other.
Exactly.
So, I mean, you can't.
An acre if they don't have it, a half acre if they do, and a quarter acre if they have both.
But I just wanted to open up the discussion because it's not listed in our subdivision.
That was, yeah, that's, that's.
I don't see any point in setting ones, I'm with Mr. Woods. Now, what difference does it make? All those issues are gonna come up anyway. Well, y'all gonna have central sewer or not?
I still want someone to come in here and try to say, uh. Well, they wouldn't sit at the fore, you know, it ain't in the board, so you're pretty happy, boy. You did it a long time ago. Just have something in the books, we have some rules and regulations. Real simple.
So while we're talking about rules, is, I haven't seen anything in the rules that say a subdivision over so many lots has to have two entrance or exits.
At that school, they say that it is definitely, it has to be now.
I know, but it's nothing in our rules, so that's something that we do need to put in our rules.
Yeah, there's several things that ain't put in our rules.
It needs to be an entrance and an exit, or emergency exit, you know? In case something happens on the bank, entrance.
I get it.
It's in the government code, I forget which one, I printed it out of the merit when that was dropped to me.
I mean, just say that's not.
Something new.
And that, that may be, I didn't think it covered that code.
I think we all need to sit down and read them and see what needs to be.
All right, we're just, we'd be bypassing that rule anyway.
Well, most of the barracks is not multiple lots, and the problem is that the traffic coming out, if there's an emergency, everybody's gotta get out, and there's only one way, you just lock up, out of the gap. That, that's, that's the problem.
That's a valid point. Now, the, the new subdivision is our, the law.
The government code.
I don't want you to have a chance to look at that more, I mean, is there two exits?
Yeah, we have a creek, yes.
It is, but I think at that one point, that ended up at one or something, I think it was an issue.
Okay, I didn't know, I, I don't remember that.
Got that worked out, but I did remember it tested.
I don't want you to get in that time, go through all that, I get it, I just ask you a question. Commissioner Martin, you're talking about our period, you said that an acre for what you need both, and a half acre if you've got one, and then it can be a quarter, so you got both.
If, if the.
Well, I'm sure. But you're not a real house.
I can tell you every day. If we're doing acres too low.
Well, that's what I put. That's what I'm saying, you're not a real house or body. No, no, I'm just looking at some stuff I put out there, and it goes further.
They just doing water, set before you're not water.
I mean, okay, let's just, let's talk about rules that have been done in the past. There, they do have public water, and I'm talking about the bottoms. Those are about point one, one, two.
Tenth of an acre, yeah.
A tenth of an acre.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're rules, they shouldn't, you know, if we were doing it all over again, that probably wouldn't have got through.
Exactly. So I just was one grand.
Actually, why you run them? Fifty about, what's that, about fifty about one twenty?
Yes.
The lots here in Cold Springs and town are twenty-five by hundred twenty-five.
Yeah, there you go. But I mean, I'll say we do taste different now than we did then. So what do you think? Let's, let's slow the plan a little.
I agree with your plan. Quarter acre, they have sewer and water, and half acre if they have public water, and one acre if they have.
They're a bunch of luck.
I'm wondering of an acre if they have sewer and water.
Half acre if they have either one.
But you gotta be careful with this though, because if you got aspect ratios that are real narrow, you could have a quarter acre lot, and there's no way you can get any, any kind of building up.
Well, let's say a tenth of an acre, a tenth of an acre, whatever.
No, I mean, you're just pulling numbers out of the air.
Okay. Zero to a, to a half acre.
What you finished saying.
With water and sewer. Does that work, Mark?
Well, you're pulling numbers out of the air, which is not really paying attention to aspect ratios.
Yeah, you gotta pay attention to the aspect ratios.
I'm sure, sure, I'm not asking why, Mark, but exactly, I'm not asking why.
So what he's saying is, is like, if you got five foot drains, you're gonna need water, and then you only have thirty-five foot lot in the beginning now. I mean, you're only gonna have one, like, twenty-five foot.
I understand that, that's why you do it. Well, you're saying, well, I've got an acre and a half, so it means Montgomery County over there? Half of it, almost acres alike. You know, I've got it by their standards, and I can put a well there and have a set. But it really doesn't follow what you, what you, what the intent was there, it's like.
Yeah, you know, you got, you got a condition there that would force you to modify it.
So you, you, you're involved in this, what, what, what does you, you think, seriously, what do you think?
He's thinking.
Y'all involved in it?
Well.
So what do y'all think?
They do have minimum standards when it comes to something like the O S S here.
Yeah.
I mean, you got it.
We talked about that.
So, I mean, why do we need to put a regulation, another regulation in there?
Okay.
And hopefully up to you that.
Okay, I mean, but it also, it also covers what, if you have public utilities or. And that's part of it too, though.
Well, if you wanna put something out, you can put minimum lot sizes. Has to have the requirements that fit the separate system.
T C Q rule.
Yeah. I mean, there's no reason to have to do it though, just 'cause if you wanna do something in the room.
Yeah, I mean, follow T C Q rules and regulations, that's right.
I mean, and.
That's what I'm.
Problem is, if I was wanting to form a subdivision, instead of having to go through the final T C E Q regulations, the half acre, that it needs stated somewhere in the regular rules and regulations. Of a minimum lot size, not having to go through the separate.
Lot size does not fit all, is what he's trying to say. Pick yourself into a corner when you start. All mature is picking up sizes.
So I guess I was thinking, oh, that's about T C Q.
So they can't say, we didn't know that y'all's rule is.
Just normal.
So we got a copy of that, honestly.
Exactly. He's not at that.
Me too.
He say leave.
What about, what about the entrance and exit? You gonna put that number in there, Jen, put that in there?
Yeah, me too.
I think that's a good rookie hood idea.
Me too.
It's probably, it's probably, but it certainly, it's easier to enforce if you. Get out of our rules, you know, they are. They're the flies. We don't have it in there, it implies we're not following the law.
Also preliminary are no longer supposed to be.
We have to read them?
You want that?
Huh? Just got it sorted out.
We get that, we get that.
The preliminary, um, flats and separate subdivisions, I think they're none, we're not supposed to.
What, you don't do it?
According to what I learned last night. Obviously, y'all know I'm still struggling, so, but it, it was a thing that kind of stuck out that they said, 'cause I had one coming, so.
Oh, yeah, you got two coming.
No, I got a bunch coming.
I know, two, I know, two, sorry, Peter. But three?
So what, if they're not called preliminary flats, what is coming?
They want everything done all at one time?
There's no one.
The final, and they want the application and everything in the same.
Just, just like the base.
It's not gonna happen.
I agree, because I agree with what happened, but I'm just saying.
Fifteen more things we need to talk about other than that. Out of number twenty-five, consideration discussion, possible vote approved to waive permit fees for FEMA temporary housing units. We usually have, and after a declared disaster, you know, the law is it.
So, I talked to T Dums and FEMA last couple of weeks. Uh, there are two hundred and twenty-six residents in the county that are eligible for temporary housing units.
Remember, we wanted to set that up, I said, Trippity County?
Well, thank you.
Where are they at? What, I mean, what, what's?
That's just the, um, the, the class. Both. Both.
And it's, it's been, what, six months since the flood, and now we're gonna get a house? They're just, they're just now, they're just now getting, getting a crack, you know? I love.
I'm like, I'm like close to, to waive the permit fees for FEMA housing.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tito, a second time. Commissioner Sweeney, consideration discussion possible vote to waive permit fees for FEMA temporary housing units. As long as they don't install them in the Ruth Miller survey.
Certainly, you can't, you're telling you're giving them permission up to be in the flood line, right?
Ah, yeah. They did.
That was just a little human.
Mark, Tricia, we said five hundred, Tricia, yes?
Sure. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, aye seven two thousand five zero, waive permit fee for FEMA housing.
So, we'll take a little, a little break.
So, here, here, Mark, it has a Volvo engine in it that nobody could fix. I've been down for one truck for.
Wait a minute, when did you buy it?
Two thousand nine, four eight.
Come on, did we buy a new one?
No, no, I'm here for years.
You had no problems with it?
No, sir. No, sir. The problem is, is a Volvo engine in this thing, and nobody, I took it four or five places, and it run, I've been down to one truck for maybe two months now, and it's tough.
You got three bids?
I have four.
Four more?
The best one is the two hundred and twelve thousand dollar one on the Bible. It's the same international as we were on that time.
This is Dan yard truck center, that one's two thirty-six, is that off the Bible?
No, sir.
We can't.
I know, but I got them anyways.
What about Max?
Yeah.
Hey, is it off the Bible, Max?
Yes.
And what was it, 'cause I couldn't match them all, it got scrambled up.
So, what was the bid of that Max? Ah, I got it. It was like two forty-eight or something, fifty-eight. Wait a minute, this, but the international is the best side, it is on the Bible.
It's the best side, and the Max on there too, but it's a little bit more.
Lot is. How much is it, sir?
I'm maxing, hoping it's way better than my international.
I don't know, the word.
Hold on, but the Max said a Volvo engine.
The name.
I don't, I don't, I don't want a Volvo engine. I'm telling you.
We have, uh, we've had internationals.
I had, I had good luck with international, I don't know. Been good luck.
From us, Paul, international, it's like, come as well, then.
Oh, yeah, that's similar, they're all right.
Those things work forever, they're all right. You had the Sash trucks and all that, that Max.
Yeah, they're not maxed out, but. Because they admission, they couldn't get their admission.
It's like, it's.
Us in this Max, uh, it's on a separate sheet.
H D A C, not God.
Yeah.
Well, that's the same, it's a, it's a.
It's same. I don't know if you see this, but.
So, I realize, maybe, where are you gonna get the money from? That's, that's.
Well, I'm at the point in time where if I don't do something, I'd shut down some of the dogs.
I think that.
I thought sanitation.
No, I'm just, I'm just, put it out there.
Didn't sanitation have what?
Watch your face.
Make your money last year on the money.
We use it in the budget.
There's, I don't think there's any money in there, Mark.
No, that's what I'm saying, we use it.
Yeah. So.
If, if the finances. They know what we do till next budget anyway, right?
Yes.
You didn't plan to buy one, is that what you're trying to tell me?
I don't have it in the budget, I have one dollar budget.
So, if the finances is.
You know, this is unforeseen next year. Problem.
So, so is that all right, if you, you wanna buy it, and then next year?
Should we give the alternative to sell the level truck?
Yeah, I'll play, try to play something.
Try to play something down.
And then we'll budget the money.
And then budget, money gets up, come budget.
Yeah, I see you get a P O, pick it up, 'cause they have that international in stock, ready to go.
It's gonna, it's ready to pick up.
It's ready to pick up? Oh, we gotta have.
You got two on H G A. One of them's a Freightliner for two fourteen, the other one's a.
I am, I am, that's why I'm going with international.
And this one's a international.
International.
Where is it? Can I do the big ones, the Ford build the big ones for international?
Says it's a rail bay engine diesel four seventy-five, I don't know what that means.
Horsepower.
Well, I give that part of it, it don't say.
No, I said, let's see, I was a freight tanker.
Four hundred.
Yeah.
It's both, the ones that sells the Max?
Sure.
Oh. The four. Whole truck center.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got it. You had four in there, you had a Mac, and then national, and Freightliner, what was the other one? You had a Mac.
Two fifty-two for this, for this Mac, that must be, right?
I think they, I think that one was international, but they didn't, they didn't buy the truck, and that one company had to buy a truck and rig it out of their stuff. This is here, it was already, but it's in the same way with all the other trucks, except they're national. They have to get the truck, it'd take too much to get the body. International has one in stock for the cheapest price. I think it's two twelve or something, right there, or something like that.
So, y'all.
I know it's a big eight.
To the finance company and.
Yeah, I see what I see, closer on that. I guess if you risk, you're gonna be home.
That's.
And they make it far.
Okay, that's what I thought. That's what I'm trying to show. Yes.
What's his name?
Do you have an angle of that?
What's the guy with the name?
It's.
Houston International.
Don't matter. Houston International.
This sheet here says two twelve, but I don't know where it goes, it says home, it was in that whole circle. Look, you got it sorted, right?
That's been a long time with that attached.
That goes, international, that goes with that, this goes somewhere.
That's why I have it so. They only see it on one paper for, uh, Freightliner.
That's the back. This says back, that goes to the back.
That's international truck, see it probably. They might be for Vanguard. Now, Vanguard's still the other. Those are all I see. Thank you for listening, Chris.
Well, that's the back.
No, this is international. Yeah.
Which one we chose was breaking, they're crossing through.
Yeah. Yeah, Volvo was wrecked one time before, Robin, I become an officer.
But it's gonna be so.
Steve wrecked it real bad. No, I'm just saying, he's, I mean, I look at, wasn't his fault, I mean, it was wrecked.
No, he's still being sad and proud of it.
No, he's not, he retired.
Oh, no, I was talking about, it's still being sad and proud of it.
Truck ain't hit me. It'd be Leonard.
Oh, I like Leonard too.
They did not do a good job, I mean.
I, I, uh, got the self respect a few times.
And I have, and I have really, and I know y'all do too, but I have really two good guys working with y'all. They're really good, they're good.
I'm just glad all my.
So, is your thing is the international truck?
Yes, the two hundred and twelve thousand.
And you, and you finance it?
Yeah.
This guy next year?
Yeah.
Not on table?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we'll do that. Do all checks update, will it?
No, I'll do it when you get that.
Okay.
You talking about international through Pope, right? It's Houston International. Says Houston's Pope trucks in Texas.
That's it, it's Pope, it's Houston.
Says two twenty, two twelve. So, we don't have nobody in the budget to buy, how, how exactly do you plan on buying?
That's the place you drive by yourself too.
Only I see that it's not, it's a pretty close picture.
Kind of such a situation.
That's a general fault, that's what they don't pay for, I mean.
General fault, I know, right?
General funds won't pay for it anyway. General funds won't pay for it anyway, that's where, that's where the budget is from the beginning.
Get one of those leases, like, pretty soon.
I mean, you got money to buy, what is it? What, you know, do your little hopeless focus, your little smoke. No, it is kind of emergency, the other one's down.
It's down, it's down two months. I've had it thirty-four places, nobody can fix it. Is it worth fixing? No. And I try not to buy nothing on this, I got that, I promise you all that, that's a fact. That other truck was a ninety-one model, I really like that.
What do you think of that?
Sad.
What's, what's the bottom?
Fifteen, ten, I don't know, no, fourteen, you know, what? Maybe, may, I doubt it.
Did that ever see Christmas?
Yes.
Those are.
Set.
Those are set last week, vote, no. Then all the other ones, like, Texas Independence Day, Memorial Day, Labor Day, Martin Luther, whatever other day. The only way that can do that then is if somebody requests and we vote to do it.
I'm making most of that out of it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lars.
Second it.
Second by Commissioner Sweeney. It will play with me, whether they. So, they're not under a burn ban or nothing like that?
No, I'm glad they're still in the state of Texas.
Any other comments, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, aye seven two thousand five to zero. Twenty seven. And there's an order of authorization.
Well, they do know.
Twenty second.
I'm not, he doesn't take that into.
Wait. This is an old order. Says twenty twenty, I'm here, let me change that. They must have did it twenty twenty, 'cause this is an old order that had that. I number twenty, consideration discussion possible vote to approve the barracks, property number R nine three two hundred R B O eight, that's the, that's O twenty, that's the abstract number, Jerry McGee track fifty-five point three, thirteen point eight nine nine acres, eight thousand one and eight thousand three, F M two two two, Cold Springs. Owners Tina and Brian Webb, ex-recorded under.
Is that right there on the card? I think you said two two two, but I think it's.
Uh, yes, sir, it's on, on there, two two four, I'm not gonna be said.
Yeah, you said two two two, you meant two two.
Two two four. I just noticed, if it's in the jury McGee, that survey is right there at the corner.
You guys, it's not too far.
It's kind of really.
So, where is it?
Oh, yeah.
Where's the, uh, is there some kind of proposed map or something? It says one oh seven four acre share, still.
Slap all around.
They brought the.
So, who, who's, who's gonna own the exits? It looks like it's surveyed out of this program.
There's like three maps.
Two in the back for several divisions. It kind of goes around the east, the first track goes around the east, and then the second track goes around the east. So, the person that built it on the one, you figured that one out yet?
Well, we figured it, you could, we could split it, you know?
Oh, well, we surveyed it. Now, do y'all build the buildings there?
Yes, sir.
Hold on, did a good job.
Thank you.
I mean, they're together, right? Should have those running, and then Nixon goes on.
Yeah, they're just gonna share that, and there's a day.
Another color. How long have y'all had the place?
Well, who's gonna own that little spot there?
That's what we were confused on too, like.
How long have you all had the place?
It needs to be split.
Oh, I'm sorry, just move.
Right. If we can get that done, we just.
It used to look like the same color, I've been visiting, now she looks awful.
He's probably my father-in-law, older guy.
Yeah.
Yeah, he passed away in COVID.
I'm sorry to hear that. He was a very, at some point, he was, was in the sign business maybe? She ever in the sign business?
Well, she had a prank shop there, we went there at one time.
We had somebody in the prank shop.
You see me every year at our event that we had here.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm on the same.
Yeah, but y'all were in the, y'all did signs at one time. I remember a long time ago coming by, and I'm like, anyway.
Yeah, batteries are taking maybe.
Yeah, 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 okay. You were working somewhere, I guess, 'cause I don't think.
Yeah, I did a, I did my own thing, working.
Yes, sir.
After we closed that prank shop down, we turned that building into a barn dominion for my father-in-law, so, that's, and we're trying to sell the place, and that's what we run into, trying to sell two places there, it's too hard, you know, so we're trying to split it up.
Nobody can get a loan for two thousand, so we have to split it, or find a richer person, we haven't found one yet.
Yeah, you got all this frontage on both, yeah, you, everything's good, except for that, that easement issue there, I don't know. No, nobody's gonna own it once they sell the two pieces of property, or you'll continue on, they pay taxes on it, unless you just could buy it down the middle and. Unless you just could buy it down the middle and show the one easement. Well, you got like thirteen acres or something like that, and there's one flat that shows seven acres. So where's the other seven?
It's gonna be six, six point two seven and six, then seven point four four, I think it ended up being.
So we're toward the back, for instance, two small, three more.
Well, I see another, it was a three point something acre, Duane and Mary. How do you get to that?
Well, that's my mother and father, I sold them, we owned that property there. But he has like twenty-four acres behind us, he can access it from inside.
Okay, I just, that's one thing we, we go out and things, we gotta make sure we ain't cutting nobody out. Up at the front, there's somebody named Kobe Brand. Is that where the, uh?
That had that old house, the product.
Is that where the, uh, extension guy or?
Yeah, his, his brother lived there, yeah, that.
What was that guy's name?
I can't remember, it was two brothers that owned that property.
Summerall.
Summerall, their summerall brother, summerall.
Aaron Summerall.
Aaron worked for the county, he was an extension agent, but he was, the other was his brother.
He let that place go back.
Yeah, that sounds, alright.
We were gonna try to buy it, but I think the guy that ended up with it knew the realtor, so. They kept on us to hold up, and then, next thing you know, we missed out.
Golly, he tricked and tricked you. So I would make the motion to grant the variance, would the easement?
You're gonna, you're gonna have to buy that easement, depending on two properties, some kind of way. Because technically, you've got three pieces of property now.
Okay.
Well, I'll just put it with one and the other.
Yeah, just put it with all of the others, as long as they know they have, they have to use that share of easement.
Yeah.
So. One on the six point three, is that the one that fronts one fifty-six, because it don't really say that.
It doesn't.
Yeah, there's smaller.
Earl Stanfield, that's where the propane tank is? So y'all don't front one fifty-six? I thought you did, I thought you come in.
No, that was just, that's a, that was an easement there that, uh, that Chico had, just to get to that power line. And we used it for a while until the highway department come and stopped us. And said, put a COVID in on two two four, and quit using that. Because when you pull out there, you can't see to the right, you know, you got that big dip in one fifty, it was bangers. You know, so. I mean, we used it for a long, a long.
Is the highway department in your Texas for you? The idea that, tell me where I can drive into my own place?
They do. They do. They damn sure do, they did think. Matter of fact, they bought, they bought the Culver Committee to Montecillo on a Saturday, you met with me. On Saturday, there were seven of us.
So as far as Tech Dot's concerned, that little bitty shared area right there, that's, you gotta drive in that driveway to get to this six acres, and then through that same driveway to get to that seven acres. So they're hussy about, you know, you two, two COVID, put in two, sorry. I thought there was a distance you could. Long you had so much distance, I didn't think.
It used to be, four hundred and fifty feet. But he came like to his house and his shop, he came and had two driveways. Came, yes, it does, I had to land up, that's what I had to do, to get an extra driveway to him.
He's got three sixty-six on one.
It's weird now, just sad.
There's nothing wrong against that, being designated as a shared easement.
They, they all it together, they sell it, as motion was.
They, they not all together unless they say, this truck is going to, going to buy the easement. Why, why exactly couldn't they else?
It's a separate, separate, that's my shit.
It doesn't matter how many names is on the deed.
It doesn't matter how many names.
I mean, if he gets ready to sell the seven acres, he would just sell them an undivided half interest in that charity, you could set it up where it's, wherever it needs. I mean, there's no legal reason unless you just want to be. No, I'm just, I'm just curious.
The truck that, yeah.
They were trying to keep the easement for themselves, I guess, and I mean, I didn't know. And they said, no, we don't, we don't own the easement.
No, we sell both places, we're just gonna, uh, go with it.
You didn't pitch a chance.
Well, I'm gonna think what you're be selling though is, when you sell the seven acres, you're gonna sell that and a half an interest in that easement. And the, or the right to use the easement, you don't have to own it at all, they can just own it, they can just own the right to use it. It's probably simpler to let one own it or the other, long as I got the right to come in there, come to do fire, you know?
It's confusing to us too, we tried the two driveway thing first, and that didn't work.
Now, y'all will keep the, the park building in the very first one?
Yep, that's what I'm saying.
It's a nice building, man. I ain't trying to get any business, don't y'all own the place, so worry about Chico or y'all, so.
We sold it a few years back.
Yes. Y'all moving out now?
No, we bought another place up out of Grayland, but we're gonna stay around here, we saw that corner, we're just trying to downsize, maybe.
Cut that taxes.
Buy a smaller house in Cape Will or something, let's take care of it.
So what do you want it to be?
You want to keep it or let it go?
We're gonna let it go.
Whether it was one track or the other?
Yeah, I think that's, we'll let it go for one or the other.
Well, I'm gonna guess it's his business, we just.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Matto, seconded by Commissioner Mars, to, to do what now?
Grab the easement?
Grab the.
They made grab.
Grab the.
Grab the variance. Eventually the variance allows you to divide this thirteen acres up into two pieces with a share of easement. That's crystal clear as made, any, any other comments, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, eyes have it, two thousand five to zero. Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
And we hate to see y'all go too.
No, we're not gonna, we're hoping, we're gonna buy a smaller, smaller round here.
We like to give our good people.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate your patience.
Island number twenty-nine. I'll quit the word on this a little bit, I appreciate you wanting to throw it away or do something, I'm declaring this. So. Consideration discussion possible vote to approve decoration, sound of broken items located in precinct one, Rosenbridge. GE microwave, microwave. Wine and core S A C asset number up triple O six seven eight, this is not on current asset list, but has an asset number. Small microwave, no records to know when purchased, so old, serial number to be located on microwave. Broken, will not need the work. Bond coffee maker, V P S series stainless steel and black containers. Asset number triple O seven two one, this is on an asset list, but has an asset number, still number B P R. O four triple seven three nine. A fifty-five fourteen oh seven hundred ninety-two dollars sixty-four cents from Sam Club Coffee Maker, died March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, leaking water fixing, not fixing.
I'm gonna put that motion, hey, I gotta thank that garbage truck, that's ten dollars a unit. Yeah, I'll say it.
You take that motion, right, next to the two note. Commissioner Mars, seconded, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, eyes have it, two thousand five to zero. Number thirty. Consideration discussion possible vote to approve donation, precinct one, Rosenbridge, a ripract material, broken concrete and dirt. From a pile on the side of building located at Valero. One two seven nine oh six. Highway one fifty-six, Cold Springs, mile high door, property. Building stated eight, C fourteen, eight fifty-five. Highway one fifteen, Cold Springs. Now, that's donated, we have, when you get such donations, you have to prove that that includes. They're donating, they're giving it to others. Pick up your donations.
So, Jacob, a lot of trees that came around here, y'all run home and over there.
I do have to look at both of them, we gotta hold, we gotta hold enough of this.
Oh, I know you got a canyon back there.
I got a, I got about ten acres of bark stalks that I wanna donate to the carrier. No, I, I use that stuff.
I made a motion, but I just wanted, you to be careful with that equipment on the ground.
Be careful, I'll second that.
There's, both of them are right inside, just right on edge of the road, when you just grab it. Don't let it sit, it's gonna make you re需要用 it too.
I have a motion to accept the donation of ripract material. Uh, from, motion by Commissioner Matto, seconded by Commissioner Mars. Uh, any other comments, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, eyes have it, two thousand, next time I'll go back to these, keep it all in dots, Commissioner right there. I don't know why she didn't do it. Island number thirty-one. Consideration discussion possible vote to approve, sets the dates for the free twenty twenty-five tire cycle event, run Chad.
So, I sent a date over by the shopping.
Any, any proposed dates and, and, if y'all like them, that cuts all of me.
April eleventh, precinct one and three. April the twelfth, precinct two to four. Them banks work great for me. From seven thirty with my double hook until eight, so.
Well, you can change it if you want.
No, no, it's, I'm not, you know, they can wait five minutes, it'd be alright.
You don't say change it?
If I need it now, I'll do it later. That's fine, the good days are mine. This is free to the public, will you?
Seven thirty A M to twelve P M.
Thank you.
Or until the trailer could fool.
Got it.
Last time, we, we got a spare trailer, we played with it, she's got a bridge.
Truck came over there, I've been loading for three years. I'm selling one place and then all.
And what, what we need to do as a court, what we need to do, all corporates need to do, and visit our sheriff individually, and make sure that we get inmates that they, to help us.
Sounds like a plan.
If, if, I thought I would have had some more over here, but we kinda all, after.
So that was the motion?
Yes, sir.
Do you have, we have a second? One second. Come on, add the motion.
I did.
You got a motion by Commissioner Mars, seconded by Commissioner Matto. Any questions?
See, I go on, we don't have any, uh, maximum per person that comes in, I can see right here.
No, the answer is no commercial.
No, it's not no commercial. Maximum, somebody's been saving these up, but it's, it's.
I don't care. Don't be trying to hit me off instead.
Okay, John, I'm down with my road.
We're gonna, that lady to dispose of, so it's a.
Bring up to the bin.
So people, so last time, we had in precinct one, they were confused because they had these trailer coming. And they didn't know who they were, they thought it was a commercial guy, but it wasn't, it was the cake. The cake girl, man, it's in the trailer.
Yeah.
They didn't know that until after, after I started talking to the guy from the cake.
They gather them all, having a whole church engagement, which is a good idea.
Aye. Island number thirty-two, consideration discussion possible vote to approve the resignation of Darrell Bosky. And appoint a new commissioner for that position to the emergency services district number two. I thought there were two of them retired.
No, it's just one one.
The Bosky's standing in the resignation and then I said.
Person was that, what I mean?
It was my, my fault, we.
If you have a forty-two year dude.
Um, I'd like to make much to accept the resignation of Darrell Bosky, appoint Marie Murphy.
I'll second that.
That the lady that kept showing up there?
No, this is the very lady, but her version lady is in the apartment.
Very real good.
Outstanding.
Did we put the lady that showed up though? I, I didn't.
The lady that showed up recently?
No, there was another lady that showed up two or three times, two or three different meetings, expressed interest.
No, it's.
It's not the same lady. I'm just trying to figure out who it was, because I don't remember her. Is this a homeowners association appointee, or is this just a randomly division?
Oh, this is a random division.
I'm never gonna eat.
Did I get a second? Go ahead and say it.
Yeah, second.
I heard Commissioner Matto, I just didn't realize you said. Any other questions, I have a motion by Commissioner Matto, seconded by Commissioner Mars.
So, yeah, this is my fault, he is gonna be for two years term.
He told you he didn't wanna do it?
He sent, yeah, he sent, it was actually, it was actually a letter.
Resignation.
He could tell him, he sent where.
Oh wait, I see it's an email, says I pray for him every time, resigning from my position, thank you to me, they are all their business.
She had a emergency surgery in case she had several block.
Had the emery got sworn in yet?
Yes, we got it, only one week before, but she had blood clots.
I looked still around, I used to do that for all E S D board members, and I didn't kick me to curb. I was on my way up there until I figured out.
Uh, you figured out we weren't having lunch, is what I was told. I went, I went by the lunch.
It's usually done at night in the, in the, but it don't happen.
I'm kidding.
Any other questions, look like she's a legal secretary here, or lawyer one. Any other comments, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, eyes have it, two thousand five to zero. Island number thirty-three, consideration discussion possible vote to accept or reject bids from Sensi County. Annual material bid number twenty, bid twenty point four point five, and contract services for bid number two 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 zero twelve. Twenty-four limestone face. This is the island that we've been handling three or four times. You're living back in November.
Say, real quick, can you move back to thirty-one, vote everybody?
We got the motion, seconded in there, please.
I wrote five oh. I said, all in favor say aye, y'all might know about this time. Any opposed? And I wrote, I said it, it's five oh.
I, I, I was scared then, then walked away.
You had it, five, I had it, five, those are covered. Anyways, it's voting for him, so. Let me be a little bit more forceful on my persuasion here. Thirty-three, consideration discussion possible vote to accept or reject bids, uh, so that new material, limestone face, I've already read it once. It was bought back in November or some, something. It was bought back in November or something, something like that, and. It was delivered. It was not, it was over fifty thousand dollars, it was not by. Purchased from somebody that was on our approved material list, so the court didn't know how we could. They don't get sued for violating the law or the, uh. I mean, the guy who got the bid on the buy of limestone may have a cause of action, so. Anyway. You have been asked to look into it, last I heard, there's no, we have to find a way around doing it. It, it's a good fight, but that's, we gotta follow rules.
Potentially, Jeff, there's, there's two different ways that we can approach this. Right, it's one, one is capital, we already talked about that. Just wasn't, uh, pretty good bidder or anything like that. What we, we're, with Marty and I were able to kind of figure out is that this material was worth reclaimed limestone. So.
That's not what we advertised for.
Right, that's correct. That's correct. So, uh, now, we may be able to justify this as a unique material. So at least get it somewhere around there, but, uh.
Why don't we kind of jump through hoops for, to make up for something that's just done? If it wasn't done the way it's supposed to be.
The, the, the court actually pre-searched it, and I'm just giving the court all their options. So that's, that's all it is. So whatever option the court thinks is the best idea, basically. The best way to go, absolutely, I understand that, I'm just.
I thought we left it with you were gonna contact it and see what you could. Every day or whatever.
There's, there are not ones to donate, that's why I'm trying to do.
So I'm sure after we got it, they can pay us.
But then they're gonna charge us to.
We need to write the bill. So let me ask this question, a legal question to Mr. Luke.
Yes.
Quan, we did not approve a contract of Quan.
Yes.
But, uh, representative from the county did contact Quan.
Yes.
So therefore we owe the bill to Quan.
Not really, there, there's things that could be done for, when you go and just break the law. There are consequences to that.
I think that, I was just looking.
That's a, you're, you're correct, that's a void contract, right? So the, the contract with Quan is void, we could, we could say, hey, go kick rocks, we're not paying. There's consequences to that.
Sure is.
And I think that's what we're talking about, that's what we're talking about with that.
Well, we're just letting it go by for over a year.
But on Quan, didn't you say that it fall out under services, so it didn't necessarily have to go out?
It's, yeah, as far as the bidding thing, that's completely different, I'm just saying whether it's a void contract. This would also be something that you could consider under that's a void contract, right?
Let me clarify that. You're right, it's professional services and you don't have to bid that, but if you sign a contract to acquire those services, you gotta approve that. And that never happened. They just signed one.
Yeah, just, just like the, the proper way to do that would be that contract being approved by the commissioner's court, signed up by the judge. At the direction of the court, the proper way to do this would have been to be bidding through and approved better.
So what's our alternative?
I mean, like you said, there's, there's one alternative that we could justify it under this unique material. Now, the problem is going back to that it wasn't bid as unique.
Sure.
The, the contract was that on the bidding, it wasn't bid as reclaimed limestone, it was just limestone face.
Nothing unique about it, though, there's, you can find, uh, reclaimed limestone all over the state of Texas.
Okay.
I'm just, just saying that. It, it, it's not unique material.
I mean, as, as far as if we're unique, if it were reclaimed limestone, that for whatever reason.
Going in the dark, that'd be unique material, I suppose.
If, if we vote on it, then we're in the wrong at this point.
That's right, you're right, exactly right.
And if we don't vote on it, they can probably sue us for not paying for us.
No.
Should surrender.
Uh, I, I, I think that they could, they could try to, but I don't see there being. As, as far as a contract or wasn't entered into legally, that was, that the commissioner's court cannot approve without taking a legal action. I don't see there being liability for the county.
We should tell them to come get it, we don't, we didn't go.
If it were an automobile. And, and, uh, and the auditor just went out and issued a P O and bought an automobile for the auditor's office. It'd be real simple, hey, man, the court didn't approve this, y'all need to go forward, you need to come get this automobile. This is just a little bit different because it costs money to come get this. As far as I'm concerned, whoever owns it could, I guess they could sell it right out of the, right out of the yard. At least it wouldn't have to be. Yeah, well, you wouldn't have to pay twice to, to have it.
Hey, somebody loaded it, they don't load it for free.
I guess they bring their owner.
Oh, you said, let them come on county property and load your own material.
I'll say that, yeah.
I mean, is it mixed up with the rest of the material?
Well, it doesn't matter, it's all in one pile, as long as there was enough yard.
Is it legal for a separate, is it legal for another county to mount this zone and bid it out for another precinct?
Yeah.
I gave you three hours, yard for yard, you can come load it.
We can't sell it. You gotta, you gotta own it, you know?
When do we go out for bids again?
Jesus Christ, wow.
Like off in the first part of September.
March April? I think it's March April.
No, we don't, we don't go out for bid until.
Have we gone out for bids this year for materials?
Yes.
Yes, we have, for this year that went into effect for October first.
When did we do that?
April.
If they were coming up in March, and I'm just saying if they were coming up.
We just did it, that's the big one.
You could say, well, I don't know why this hand didn't turn in the deal anyway, you could say, well, look. You know, I won't turn in a bid before I can buy it then.
Well, we, we did our test.
After, for limestone, not for whatever this is.
It's still the same. Still the same.
I did a limestone base.
I'm just saying that's one way of.
Problem with that is you, the law says you split, when you go out, you don't get to do it, uh, times a year. It says all the bids have to be opened at the same time.
I'm not, I'm not something issue, I understand it. But you're talking about limestone, limestone, limestone base is all basically the same. It ain't a limestone base, hell's got dirty.
Even limestone base.
Yeah, even limestone base got dirty. It's, so, I mean, you're not saying dirty limestone base, we're just saying, it's a theory limestone base, you leave off.
So, so my, 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 I agree with that. My, my, we did, last year, we did, this came up. After, we had already bid.
That's right.
We went out to bid and bought some, all of us, all four of us.
You shouldn't have done that.
Regardless.
We should, could, we did it.
Yeah, we did.
We did.
Just. Cause it was good. My uncle's out. Uh, A and L asphalt missed the bid. They come to the auditor and said, and I didn't care whether they were accepting or not, because they passed the bid.
They didn't even sure that we put it on.
Y'all put a home bid in this, so, I mean, to say that, maybe that is a little, but that's what we've been doing.
And we bought private that a long time, because the same time.
We, we had, uh, Adams over there had a bunch of stuff they got off forty-five there at New Waverly. And we come here and they let them bid it, because materials are specialized, uh, it, it's almost like a. You don't, you, you want an opportunity to get this at one time.
That's what I'm hearing, I hear an issue in the statute about being able to accept more than one bid because of where it's located. Because transportation is such a big fact, and it says that in the statute.
Yeah, but Adams come to us, Adam Dunn, they got a bunch of that, uh, recycled asphalt sitting over here. Route forty, and they said we can sell it through this amount, so we run through the court, got permission to buy. Even though it wasn't bid, at the same time everything else is bid, we still have an opportunity to buy.
I don't know, we just found that, but it is kind of different than just what's out there, because. You're getting it at a much better price because of, of extenuating circumstances.
So we just, we just don't want, I guess that's why this came up, it was pretty much.
Next one, I wouldn't help for that.
That's what I'm saying, classified as, it's basically it's a unique material that is available at this one time.
What do you call it, accident circumstances?
Basically what I'm saying, well.
Extenuating circumstances.
Yeah, accident circumstances more like a criminal deal, but, I mean, yeah, I mean, you're not wrong, that's kind of what it factors in, though. On the statute, that's what we call the unique materials or unique situation, that's basically what we're talking about. There's a potential to justify it at that point. But, like you said, that's, that's a, for you all to decide whether that's a justification you think meets the situation. I can tell you it's not how it's bid.
What's that be of the emergency situation? Because if you use some of that material on somebody who knows that was a taken by the.
It's still sitting in the pot.
No, it ain't, it ain't, it ain't.
I think that the portion, if you did have to. If you did have to use it during a declared emergency, I think you'd be okay for that.
You use some of it for something that was, it was a damage.
It wasn't an emergency, I mean, that was in, if it were in July and the storm had just hit maybe, but not four months later.
It, it would have followed, it's kind of like with a jack or ace or something like that, so, I don't know.
I said, we've got, before I mentioned this, we've got several people who are already on the bid list, right? They're approved for that stuff, that material, whoever that is. Give them a call, sell it to them, they get it paid for.
We, we don't, sell it.
Well, let's, say, to whoever delivered it, let them, let them, it's paid for and then.
We can get it for sixteen dollars. So you can call them and say, hey, would you buy this so we can buy it for you sixteen?
You don't want that to move it like a dollar too.
We, we buy it for forty-one dollars, that's what it comes to.
Without tracking.
I know that, tracking.
Without tracking, you say fifty-one dollars a ton of mush out, for play with mush out, I'm just saying.
They're approved, I got five hundred, they're approved myself, but I.
I'm just saying, even if we end up paying a little bit more for it, we can get it from somebody that we can buy it from. And get rid of the mess, I mean, and doesn't even have to be moved or anything. Whether you pay twenty dollars for it, whatever they go in.
That's subjective structure.
Exactly, exactly. But I'm just saying, if you don't want to move it again, and we got it out there, it has to be come from one of our guys.
Our brother?
That's right. And that's who could end up owning it.
If you, if you sit up here and tell us it's, it, it. It's okay to buy it because of a exigent circumstance or whatever spend you put on it.
You say about it.
Ain't going nowhere.
I don't say anything up here that I'm not willing to stand behind.
You're not going anywhere, are you?
Not until we get people to understand some kind of.
Statute of limitations runs out on this, dude.
I, I don't think I'm worried about statute of limitations on this one. But, you know, no, I mean, I think that's a fair interpretation of that, there's wrinkles with it, I think we discussed those wrinkles. You know, but ultimately it's whatever, that is one way that we could justify that.
What's the total this morning?
What's the total of it? It was eighty-four thousand.
There's another one too. Now, I'm just. Right at it, I'll do.
Nah.
With the two loads? Two different tires?
I think so.
Well, the, the, the only invoices that I had totaled out to eighty-four thousand, below eighty-four thousand.
I see, I see, it totals two, two different deals.
Might have been one deal and then they said, it was, it was all of it, about three, two or three different tires.
Yes, every, every one I saw was eighty-four thousand too.
Luke, can you go, uh?
I mean, unless there's one that I haven't seen.
Where would the money come from, Mr. Luke?
I got a little piggy bank back there.
Sir?
I can buy it back.
If you bought it back, where would the money come from?
That's on the bank. Bring it out of my.
I'm putting it back from being a bank's material money. What puts you in, but all we're saying is, it's a hundred thousand dollar hit.
I got it, I got it. And again.
I thought y'all were gonna split it.
Yo, we, we offered it to him, if he, if he does.
If he doesn't.
Yeah, it puts him on the file, we will try to get him again.
Sir, can you, two dollars a ton?
Drop it down to ten, twenty instead of thirty.
Hey, we haven't even on this thing yet. But yeah, I mean, that's, I, I think you've got.
Just give it an option, get it in, get it with those guys and then you.
I sort of make sure that it doesn't get. If you're telling us it's good to go, I mean, I.
I think you can justify it under that situation. I mean, I think you could do that, the other thing too is, I think you can also justify, the government code also states that there, that, uh. Municipalities, counties, and states are to give preference to recycled materials, which is definitely qualified with recycled materials, I think that's accurate.
What does that have to do with, with buying from somebody?
Recycling materials does, I mean, it's reclaimed limestone, so.
Okay, that situation right now. That, over the highway projects, it's a same situation. How is it supposed to get all the entrances on our county road?
The material off of them?
Well, they give them to a private individual. So now, hold on. So now, they're gonna give me all the exits and all the other stuff. And what the state don't want, we can buy. The day when they start rambling.
So, how's it? If, if it's from the state, that's a whole different ball.
It's not, it's from a contract.
Whatever we want from the state.
It's from a contract.
I thought you said it was from the state.
It is from the state, yeah.
Let's take, we take, right, okay, so, it, even though the contractor's doing it?
It goes into the company's archives, he gets it.
And takes it out of that state possession if it goes to the.
That's right. So, and I know we've done that before.
But I mean, like, like you said, on, on balance, that, that is one thing that leans in your favor, however, we've got the other bigger thing, with the contractor taking possession of the first.
That's another thing, I'll just make that statement.
But there are unique situations, man, where.
So what, what you were saying a while ago is, we didn't bid out, what'd you call it?
Reclaim.
Reclaims. Yeah, but to use some other words.
Recycled materials?
Yeah, recycled materials, we didn't, we didn't go out to bid for that. And that is what this is.
That's what this is.
Yes, sir.
That's a subtle distinction.
Yeah, man, we have two subtle distinctions on our side, so, you know, I mean, that's better than the zero, so.
You're saying that this is acceptable with the subtle distinction that it's recycled materials? That's what you're gonna argue, you're gonna get sued in court, right?
We, we can get sued doing everything.
I know that.
Yeah, so, but, but I, I think it, it does change the nature. If it was this limestone base that came from a local factory or stuff like that, we didn't have all these.
Actually, realistically speaking, if we're talking about, what, what kind of a vendor would begrudge us? So we picked up a deal, get some for a third of the price, but.
How much?
You're going.
I probably said we would talk about our liability picture, I'm real happy to talk about that executive session, but yeah, I mean, I'm totally. I, I, I don't, I don't see a whole lot of liability coming to the county on this.
I'm making most of we pay, move on. Let Mr. Luke pay for his maintenance material money.
Y'all splitting it, or just are you gonna buy it all?
We'll, we'll, he'll pay for his maintenance and we'll discuss that.
Well, if you took it out in four ways, it's, it's less than twenty thousand feet or a lot at twenty.
We'll come back to the idea, I think, same thing. So what he's got? He got that money. He got my money. I'll let that be sure.
They cut it.
That's what I'm saying, would be, Marty?
He, 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 he dropped it to forty-five thousand, so it's not into.
Yes.
I didn't experience.
What is, uh, and his maintenance material is?
He might have cut that back too.
He cut his maintenance.
He cut his, no, he.
What he was changing out of this for second?
And how much is it in your maintenance material, Mr. Luke, can you look?
I know you got that money in there, please, well. Yeah, that's what I said.
I mean, he's, he's telling you, he cut it from four hundred thousand down to forty-five thousand, what he was taking out of his front tires. I've never seen that done, I said, this guy, I tell you that.
I was told if he had a nine hundred and fifty Ks in the bank that I can't get to.
If it ain't in your budget.
It's just, it's. We need a budget, Chris Luke.
Brother maintenance manager. The present one is two hundred and seven thousand.
As much as you possibly can in there.
It's about two hundred and twenty thousand. Can you say a hundred thousand, huh? Or, you know what it is?
Let me just get it paid for.
Well, sure, because it's a lot cheaper.
Are you going to pay for his maintenance material, Mr. Luke? Okay. That's my motion.
So, we can more than pay that bill?
We hadn't voted yet, because he sent another date, have you seen him update his payment? The original thing was to accept the bid, I don't think we ever did that. So, is that part of your motion?
Yes, sir.
Have we opened the bid? Yeah, for sixteen dollars. We opened it a long time ago.
I don't see that being justified on there. I think anyways for it, and I'm not.
If you're not mad that it is about that, who's saying if you think it's okay?
First, I'm reading, it says.
There's a lot of things we have to consider.
A unique situation.
Yeah.
Or unique materials, a unique situation.
It is recycled, that is good form. Everybody involved, maybe with the law, they just chose to do it their own way.
So, do you have that?
It's a good deal, so, I'm not saying it was bad. Kid was saving money.
Right.
And it does save money, it's a, that's a good, that's, that's, there's a lot to be put into that.
So, you're good with what's going on?
Yeah.
Did you have a second?
I have a second. I have a motion by Commissioner Morris, a second by Commissioner, a ten, a two dollars. Accept the bid. Who's the bid from?
James Construction.
Accept the bid of sixteen dollars a ton. Sixteen dollars, is it ton or yard?
Ton.
Ton delivered by James Construction. Any comments, all in favor, say aye. Sound like the ayes have it four to one. Who voted aye? I did.
You're staying or against?
You're staying or against? Against. All right. I think another thing with the bills, the budget amendments and reports themselves.
Y'all need anything in the next session, or you're not doing much?
Much?
No. We need you for lunch? A check out?
We already voted to do something, what, where we, uh.
Can I move it?
It's set. I said, they removed it outside.
Y'all moved it.
He did.
I cleaned all that storage out of the food.
The food is.
The law's got to pick it up.
There was some question from somebody about the number, but we had a number, thirty-five thousand, whatever.
And I think there's some court costs that they were going to talk about.
Well, surely we can get those away.
We better.
We can't, we're, we're not.
We're going to split it four ways.
Don't be splitting four ways.
Well, this might do it, all right. I'll tell you why I'm doing it. I'm getting all the oil changed, getting all the service, getting the windows fixed, we'll do it all on our yard. That way, I got to.
It better not have the last name Moore, because I need. More, Josh, more.
Me, no. What I say, I got the works of me at my shop, and I appreciate it, I promise you.
That's the, you can use.
Okay. All right, number six, consider approval of claims.
Thanks for lunch, Todd.
Hey, I could go back over, still my office, see what disasters are waiting for me there.
Is this our last inmate housing bill, you think?
I think, I think that may be such the last one, because I think those are all for December.
So, you still ain't got nobody back in?
What?
We got the inmates coming back in?
Oh, yeah, we have everybody back.
No, not I.
Pay, pay for it, some other counties.
You, you're talking about.
Outside inmates.
No, I don't think so, because I don't think we have, we don't have the J-Lo's to pay, I mean, to, to cover that many inmates right now. It's got a very sunproof of J-Lo's.
That's what I heard.
And you have.
That's the only reason he don't have it full is because.
I know that he's not trying to get in, get J-Lo's and inmates back, hey, they can remember that shit, he's trying. I'm getting a bit of a doubt.
As far as any other contracts, we don't, we don't have any others, other than our own inmates.
So, my bottom percentage is ten thousand dollars.
Ten thousand, fifty-two.
Now, that's, that's the government basis. For counties. Thank you for what they're doing. Good Lord, they go up there and go, no, you did the right thing. They're, they're cheap, they are cheap, people wrap that up sticker prices, you're getting a steal there, brother.
Yes, because I pay fifty-seven dollars a month for.
Once a week? Once a week pickup?
That's, that's for the month.
For what?
For the month.
I don't know, once a week pickup?
Yes, once a week.
So.
That's what I'm saying.
Two hundred dollars, that's why it's a hundred dollars here. Fifty dollars a month? That's six hundred dollars. That's six hundred dollars. To duck, to duck four by batch.
Twenty-two thousand dollars an inmate housing.
She's saying that's the last one she thinks.
Houston County, Justin County, Walker County, Lucy.
That's, that's all the last, that's what you signed up.
I don't know if y'all realize that, is jail for y'all two man, once they shut down that jail, that probably costs us a half a million dollars that we're going to take to get out.
Not on the route, have another man pay for the route.
For the inmates.
We paid that money and then we lost.
Shit, that is.
If he gets, we're, we're going to lose at least a quarter million.
Oh, of course we want that. I bet you didn't have that.
Probably will, so.
Because we won't get, we'll never get settled at that.
That's whole, our deal.
It does also say, it's also a billion dollars on that jail that we keep.
Mr. McCollum said, keep talking. I'll make a motion to put the bills.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Nettuno, second by Commissioner Morris. I can see the headlines in the morning.
Sir? Sir? I think you can see the headlines in the morning, I'm just telling you the truth, I mean, that's the headlines.
Any comments, all in favor, say aye, any opposed, ayes has, you got five to zero. Number seven, consideration, discussion, and possible vote?
None, this one.
To do none, number eight, consider approval of minutes. November thirteenth, November twenty-seventh, December first, December twenty-seventh.
Already read them, I make a motion to approve the minute.
I have a motion by Commissioner Domenech. Second by Commissioner Swinney, which all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, the ayes has, you know, the ayes to zero. And then we have the courts. So, yes.
I already looked over my promise, I heard it.
You got them?
Did I read all of them?
Did you get all of them?
I did.
Are you getting situated now, man?
I didn't have any internet this morning, but yeah, I think we're going to try to do some Starlink with.
Is that Elon Musk?
Yes.
Somebody said that's as good as it gets.
Well, Judge Ellser had to get it because we have no service out there, he can't get no service, so we're going to get IT to say we can share.
They shared it, then things, then they got where they had a pit hole between the. Y'all don't have to share.
We're talking about sharing that IT with us, Kevin, and.
Luke, are you getting comfortable?
We don't say anything.
You getting comfortable?
Man, they got a big old calendar on the walls. Where'd you get that calendar? Balkan usually sends us all, they have big one, but they didn't send that down, I had to order it, I got one down.
I will say the first best thing I ever did was hire Cindy.
I'm going to tell you, they make a break there.
And I will say the guys are really trying to, um, they're not about to leave.
That's why I told you about my lady.
It, it's very important, I know that, Ken.
Very good.
I made my book, and I, I made my book just so I, you know I appreciate you.
The pedal's on, right?
She very good, that's it.
Pedal's on, right.
Number nine, receive and consider approval of departmental reports, November and December.
You know, they had my park following the building in there, but I parked right back.
Well, our park where they get some visits, we get a lot of it.
They put me in a park, anyone anybody else to park there. Probably put the stickers out. Ah, y'all get used to it, it'll get good a bit, fast.
I can get access to them, you said, I would do it. It's not going to be crazy because I got so much.
You got some videos coming in.
It's very overwhelming.
You're talking about more than five thousand acres.
Yeah, two thousand lots.
And the pipelines coming.
I'll give you thousands for two acres.
Pipeline shouldn't give you much of it.
Nah, they won't.
They've been really easy to do, even with all that gear.
They won't.
They go out there and muddy up the road and all that, they get on hard, nothing.
Well, that's a no open cuts, are you?
Yeah, I read it.
No open cuts.
I got it for you. I am.
You'll never get that road fixed, you got open cut. Always been part of all they did, didn't they? Okay.
Is there something I need to be signing?
Not yet.
I'll make a motion to approve the reports, I'm, I'm missing five parts on one of them.
I have two. Easy.
I don't know.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Nettuno, a second by Commissioner Morris. Any other comments, all in favor, say aye, any opposed, the ayes has, you men, it's five to zero.
I'll make the next one.
Got a second to the motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.